All right, we're going to call to order the October 19th meeting of the West Sacramento City Council Redevelopment Successor Agency and Financing Authority. We're going to begin this week as we do each week with the Pledge of Allegiance. So we'd like to invite our guests to join the council and staff in the pledge, which tonight will be led by Ann Garrity.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, limited to its justness.
All right, the council did meet in closed session this evening to confer with our legal counsel regarding one item of substantial exposure to litigation, and no action was taken. With that, we're going to proceed to item 1A, which is presentations by the public on matters not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the city council. As is noted on our agenda, the council's prohibited by state law from taking action or having a discussion about items that are brought up under item 1A, but it is an important opportunity for a public forum. We do ask that anyone wishing to address the council on this or any other agenda item would please fill out one of the yellow cards that's available near the front door and turn that card into the city clerk. In front of the clerk is a timer that we use to make sure that everyone gets a chance to be heard, and to that end, we ask that all comments be limited to no more than three minutes. Also in front of the clerk is a flip chart, and that simply indicates which agenda item the council is currently considering. The clerk accepts the speaking card all the way up to the conclusion of the staff report on any particular agenda item. Once the public comments, the council discussion, council questions begin, we don't take additional speaking requests. If you're here on a particular item, please be sure to make sure that the card gets in before the end of the staff presentation on that item. We also know that for some folks, speaking in public is not their usual thing and can cause some nervousness, so we do ask that there not be any boos or cat calls or applause or other demonstration. We try to maintain a civil discourse here in the chambers. So with that, we have a couple of requests to speak under item 1A. The first is by Ann Garrity. Welcome.
So, thank you, and good to be here. Some of you know that I'm leading an effort to create a cohousing project in the Washington neighborhood. And this project, we've been seeking property for some time. Earlier this year, we were able to get an option on property at Fourth and G. It's a little over an acre owned by Fulcrum. And we're hoping to get sufficient members by the end of the year to start the architectural design process. We see this project being multi-story, 28 to 35 units. It's R4, but I know you're considering some changes to that. And we're very excited about it. We're hoping to get 10 or 12 members for this first group, which will do the planning work, and then gradually be attracting more members until we get into construction probably in two and a half years. So I think most of you probably know about cohousing, but this will be the first cohousing project in West Sacramento. And we have a number of workshops coming up, and I've given you some information, our perspective, and we welcome any questions or if you know of people that are interested or people who are watching this, we encourage you to go to our website, which is still And there you can sign up our newsletter and get additional information. As I said, we have two important workshops that will lay the foundation for our project coming up, November 13th and December 3rd. And I think that's what I need to say. So thank you, and as I say, we're very excited to be in this exciting community. I just was downstairs to learn that we're going to be sewed and watered and all the good things that need to happen. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much. Next is Maria Garhava.
Last time I was here, there was a comment that was made on Facebook as a result of my being here, and so I wanted to let you know how disappointed a lot of people were in the comments that you made personally against me. And I wanted you to know that there is a lot of public that feels that you owe the public, not only women, but the public in general, an apology, because as a public official and are the leader of this community, it's really important that you have high integrity and ethics. And sometimes when we're in office 20 years, we seem we might lose sight of that, and so I just want you to know that there's a lot of community members that were really disappointed in your actions, and thank goodness for Channel 40, they were interested and they were asking me about that. So anyway, I just want you to know what the public feels. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, that's all the requests we have under item 1A, so now we're going to proceed to item 1B. Are there any reports or other council communications this evening? April Temsandine.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This morning, the Upper West Sac Executive Board met, and we heard an update about the Pay for Success feasibility pilot program grant submission and discussed staffing of the Upper West Sac program. We also were invited to attend the launch next Monday, and I believe all councils invited, of the Early Learning Writingness and Storytime Activity Kits lending project that we're doing in conjunction with the library system, and the program will be offered countywide. So that's next Monday at Turner Library, I believe, from 6 to 8. Yesterday, the Age Friendly Advisory Committee met, and we heard an update on the recent progress being made to collect community input on our age-friendly community plan. And we also received a city staff self-assessment document in its initial draft form and heard a report on all the tremendous number of senior-oriented services that are already being provided in West Sacramento. I also attended a Yolo County Elected Officials and Leaders Breakfast that was put on by Yolo County, the Yolo County Office of Education on October 6th, and all the school district superintendents reported on their goals and achievements throughout the county. Linda Luna, our superintendent from Washington Unified School District, she highlighted some of the city's school partnerships, such as the badging, digital badging program, and also the internships that the city is providing and doing in conjunction in some coordination with Washington Unified School District. And then I also stopped by the Fire Department's 10th Annual Open House this past Saturday, and it was really wonderful to see so many community members learning about fire safety, visiting and touring the fire station and having fun. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Just a couple, I just wanted to first acknowledge staff on two of the events that have occurred since the most recent council meeting. Council members are present, but the opening of Village Parkway and a great job in having the rain stop for just a moment. First, to enjoy the opening of what's really a fantastic facility, a huge achievement in terms of a project that had no resources a couple, you know, even 48 months ago, 24 months ago, had zero dollars associated with, but just finding the grant monies and then just get delivering a project that no one thought we could do, that links the full, all the way from the far north of the city to the far south. It's a very significant achievement. The staff did a fantastic job on the project, but also on the celebration itself and the ribbon cutting and the parade. And then the recognition that we did on Monday night. I know a lot of work went into that, but honoring Mr. Kristoff on 30 years of service to the citizens of this community as a member of the council and in so many other ways. And it was, even though he didn't want to do it, because he's not interested in the recognition, I know, I think deep, I suspect deep down he appreciated, but I know his family and friends did appreciate the acknowledgement. So I know the council and department directors and staff and our predecessors on the council and so many other community members that attended really valued the opportunity to express their appreciation of Mr. Kristoff for his dedicated service to the citizens of the community. So thank you for, thanks to Chris, the city clerk, and the other members of the team, and to Carol Richardson, of course, who helped Chris and her team put that on. It was a fantastic event.
It was very appreciative, and I thank staff and all, everybody that attended and all of you guys for attending, and it was very appreciative. It's very humbling, but at the same time, it was, it was very appreciative.
Fantastic. And then the only other item I'd report is, Mr. Winbrot and I will be in Washington, D.C. next week. We've been invited to the White House for discussion and presentation on the work that we're doing on the promise that we'll be covering again in the Measure E discussion this evening. But West Sacramento has been identified nationally as one of the leading innovators in that space around the digital badging work and the preschool work, and now in the, kind of closing the circle on the college access and completion work through the promise. And so we'll have a full report back from that event at the White House next Wednesday. All right, as we indicated last week, we're not going to be doing any appointments to commissions until after the election, so that brings us to the consent agenda, which is items 2 through 4. Are there any items any member of the council wishes to remove, or is that a comment or question, or? We have one request from the pub to speak on, on one item first, if any other items. All right, and item 4 is consideration of approval of the minutes of the October 5th, 2016 city council meeting. We have one request to speak, and it's by Maria Garhava.
Thank you for this opportunity. I just wanted to make sure that the minutes reflected that the last time I was here and the controversy, which is what started everything, is that I did submit a comment card before the staff finished their presentation, and I submitted that comment card. It was not received, and I simply wanted the minutes to reflect that I did attempt to submit a comment card for item 11, and instead I chose item 12 to speak on item 11 and item 12. And so I just wanted the minutes to reflect that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, so any other discussion on the consent agenda? I would note, the minutes are, our minutes are action minutes. They just, they describe the, they don't identify speakers or the content of even the council's discussion, and they simply reflect the primary actions on the agenda items that were before. So is there a motion on the consent agenda?
I'll move the recommended action for the consent agenda.
All right, it's been moved by Mr. Ledesma and seconded by Mr. Johansson. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and opposed, or denied, that motion carries. Item 5 is Public Workshop Number Two on the General Plan 2035 Draft Policy Documents.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As you stated, we are here for our second workshop on the complete policy document for General Plan 2035. Tonight's item is a follow-up to our previous discussion with the council and also with the Planning Commission on the policy document as a whole. Tonight, as part of your packet, we have provided a copy of the updated version of the policy document where we've endeavored to incorporate necessary revisions based on the input we received from both the Planning Commission and the council. Those are highlighted principally in yellow within the document for you tonight. There are a summary of, you know, the comments and some of our, how we've attempted to address those for you tonight. We've moved the vision section of the document and largely rewritten it. Ms. Hamilton did a lot of research going back to the council's earlier discussions on the charter to try to incorporate many of those concepts, you know, within it as keeping with the council's previous direction. We revised several of the policies to address a lot of the council's comments from our last meeting, circling around autonomous vehicles, ride-in bike share, broadband, and then also to reference the, you know, update some of the features, including, you know, for the EIFD. And then many of the, some of the programs that had been in there were sort of maybe a little bit out of date, as some of the, as the council noted at our prior meeting. So some of those we've either, you know, amended, or some of those we would even propose to delete as they're no longer necessary or in case that some of them may have already been completed. And then we've included some new policies, most notably one regarding the 21st century policing. This is one of the, one of the things the council specifically raised with us during our last discussion. Two small changes we're suggesting on the land use, the land use map that the council has, you know, and Planning Commission have seen. A small property at the Stone Gate in Lake Washington would remain a medium-density residential as opposed to high, and then there's some small properties at the west end of West Capitol, about two or two and a quarter acres total, that would be commercial instead of a commercial highway. And then we've addressed some additional revised policies. The staff has noted between the last two workshops with the council and Planning Commission regarding level of service to help prepare us for the inevitable implementation of SB 743. So minor cleanup on utility undergrounding, and we have an implementation program for the mobility element now, which was missing from the prior discussion. So our next steps are, we have finished the EIR and the final EIR. That'll be going out. We're doing the findings. We have some hearings right now tentatively scheduled for the Planning Commission and council coming up next month. And so tonight, to close my presentation, we'd ask the council for any additional feedback you may have on the changes we've made and that since our last workshop.
Mr. Johansson.
Yeah, Dave, I just, I mean, one preliminary point on M3 dash, or M3, M-3 dot 12 is the neighborhood electric vehicle and autonomous vehicle section, which I like in the mobility element. But one of the things we've looked at the past, or at least talked about in the past is use of NEVs on Class 1 bike paths. You know, places like Lincoln and other places have incorporated that, and when you have major arterial, have multi-use type, so it's not really a street system, but it also includes a bike and trail system. So I'm wondering if something I mentioned should go in PR dash 2 dot 2, under the pedestrian and bicycle systems, or is that, it's a mobility issue, not really a recreation issue.
Yeah, we saw the, the NEVs as primarily a local mode of transportation, you know, where, you know, something less than, you know, more than a bike but less than a car. And so they're, you know, necessarily see them as being recreational in nature, but they are a good local way of transportation. So the Class 1 bike pass, this has been something we have discussed. The NEVs do get to some, some speed. I think they're, can go up on roads up till 25 mile an hour streets. So we'd have to make sure that there isn't conflicts with not only the bike paths, but then how those are also now multi-use. You have equestrians and pedestrians also on many of those paths.
All right, so I think that the language you have doesn't, is not really limiting. It basically just incorporates that mode wherever it fits.
Yeah, that was our intent for a general plan, on general plan level.
Right, all right, thanks.
Other questions or comments? They all, this is, looks great, they're, both the comments on the Planning Commission and the changes, the revisions that the staff has made based on those and based on our comments and direction from the last meeting are all, they're all great. The transit, I think it's in the transit section, and I might be missing it. Suggested the last, in our last workshop, that we have a policy about, that is about mobility as a service. This is this work that is emerging in San Francisco and some of the other Smart City Challenge winners around the cities, both using their regulatory and their road and their parking and their transit policies together to essentially present a transparent transportation system, mobility options to residents, so that this idea that it's all, so we have it in transit, sort of unified traveler information, but it's, that's, but that's only, the transit piece is only a piece of it. This is the notion of, okay, are we, we're driving towards a, towards a system where we're aggregating ride share, bike share, transit, taxi, you know, other, all the transportation options together and considering them as a system, and then trying to, trying to present them in that way to citizens, including things like being able to pay, you know, pay once, but, you know, order a trip up and those sorts of things. So I think, I think the unified traveler information system was trying to get at that point, but I think it's a larger point. That is also valuable around, you know, real-time routing and all of that, but it's a, it's a, one level of abstraction about the, about mobility more generally. And there's, there's good policy language on this from the, from the smart cities work that San Francisco and others have done as well, if we need some help on, on language. But I think we've talked about that. It was one of the drivers, we talked about it originally in the charter conversation and then again in the Measure E conversation as well, so referencing it would be, would be useful. But other than that, I didn't have any further, further comments. Yep. All right, so we have a couple of requests to speak on the item, so let's move forward with those. The first is by Sarah Garcia. Welcome.
This is my first time here.
Oh, welcome.
I'm prepared, something to say. So, hi, my name is Sarah Garcia. I'm a resident of West Sacramento. I moved here in 2009 after I graduated from UC Davis because I could see what a great community this is. We live in a city with a progressive mindset and agenda to create a city that is tolerant, open, and fosters growth. I'm here today to comment on our city's draft for the revised general plan for 2035. I believe for the long-term success of our city, that the most immediate concern is for safe transportation and mobility. Since June 1st of this year, we have had six deaths due to vehicle versus cyclist or pedestrians, and the seventh victim was just last Friday, and she's currently in critical condition. I believe that six deaths, possibly seven, is unacceptable in less than six months. These people will never return home. They were a mother, a father, a brother, a sister, a mentor, all absent from the lives of those that they care about, and they will never be able to contribute to our community again. They were lost to a senseless accident, a preventable accident. In drafting the 2035 general plan, we need to prioritize safe transportation for pedestrians, cyclists, and disabled persons with limited mobility. I urge our city council and planning committee to look to regional examples of green belts, parkways, and call on area resources such as the UC Davis Institute for Transportation Studies when revitalizing older areas of our neighborhood. I think it's clear that West Capitol is a problem. It's a main corridor through our city for bike commuters from Sacramento to Davis and from Davis to Sacramento. We will never have 100% enforcement of speed limits, distracted drivers, or pedestrians and cyclists obeying traffic laws. We need to invest in infrastructure that employs physical barriers between pedestrians, cyclists, and vehicles. We are, if we are to continue into the future as a green city, we need to reinvest in infrastructure in older areas of our city, ensuring our citizens have a safe mode of green transportation. Nobody deserves to die for walking, riding their bike, or crossing the street. Thank you.
Thank you. And Maria Garhava?
Thank you so much for this opportunity to talk, and thank you for, Sarah, for sharing her feelings and her sentiments. I know that since we've had those pedestrians death, we had one flashing light, I'm not, it's a crosswalk that now flashes. That is a new, something new that we didn't have on West Capitol. I think we need more of those. I think that regarding the general plan, regarding, there's, in addition to safety, there's a lot of other things that need to be taken into consideration. So I would like to participate in the public workshops. I see that this is number two. Myself as a resident, and also on behalf of LULAC, on behalf of League of Women Voters, on behalf of the Homeowners Association, of which I'm a member of, I'd like to participate in those public workshops, please. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. So those are the only requests we have on this item, so let's return it to the council for further questions or discussion. Great, okay, the, this will be returning to the council on November 16th. It's scheduled, the General Plan Draft Policy Document, the Land Use Map, the zoning updates, and the environmental impact report are scheduled for November 16th for a formal public hearing on the road to adoption of the plan. This General Plan 2035 review has been underway for, I'm correcting, how many years?
We began it in 2006.
Yeah, so it's, we're in year 10 of development and public workshops and outreach and neighborhood sessions and everything on the plan, so we're in the final moments of the adoption of it. But we, the purpose of the next public hearing is to take additional, and essentially will be final public feedback on the document that's, that's before us. I do want to say particularly from Ms. Garcia, this is her first, for first meeting, and really appreciate the comments about what's happening on, in the city in terms of safety, and it's very appropriate that ends here, and her extensive experience with Walk Sacramento. This is an important issue for the, for the community as a whole. And we are fortunate that our Public Works Department, Public Works Department has successfully secured funding from Caltrans for some improvements along West Capitol Avenue, and our Police Department has secured resources from the Office of Traffic Safety for essentially behavioral interventions on West Capitol Avenue as well. It is, it is frequently the case, and I'm, as a cyclist and a walker and occasionally a driver too, I do this as well. It's often, you know, our first response is to, is to, is to think and hope that infrastructure could be the solution to all of these situations, and the cases are, are all over the place in terms of the factors that have contributed to the, to the fatalities in particular, but also the number of collisions citywide between pedestrians and cyclists and, and vehicles and cars and trucks. And so we're trying to be mindful of those, of all of the factors that are involved and the need for additional enforcement, the need for additional education, and the need for infrastructure improvements at Long West Capitol Avenue and throughout the city. We are not, we're not Annalope or Roseville, we're not a new city, and we inherited several, a lot of infrastructure that's not suited to, it's not suited to what, how we're living today. West Capitol Avenue was the freeway between Sacramento and San Francisco for most of its life, and it was built to accommodate that, that amount and volume and speed of traffic, and we inherited that from, from the state and from the county. That's not, that's not terribly different from the state of Sacramento Avenue. Jefferson was in that, Park Boulevard was, was, was like that as well, which also used to be much, much wider. And so we are, and we are, but we're not, we're also not as rich as Roseville and Folsom, so we don't have the ability to go throughout the entire city and retrofit every single street, and so we're trying to take the approach, to make the improvements that we can, and also recognize that in many, in many of the cases that we've seen so far, infrastructure would not have been, would not, was not a, was not that significant contributing factor. So we can't simply strike more lanes and install more lights and think that we've actually improved the, the safety. There are other factors that are, that are at work. But the $600,000 grant from Caltrans and the funding from Office of Traffic Safety, we think it's going to go, go a long way towards reducing the likelihood of future incidents as we've seen on, on West Capitol Avenue, in addition to continued enforcement and other coordinating activities. All right, so with that, Mr. Kristoff.
Just one real quick comment, and I-
And I, Charlene, I certainly appreciate the work that you've done with you and your staff as far as putting the policy document together that, that really sort of explained all of the effort that has gone into studying the issues and, and, and trying to put together, because this is such an important document for future development, because this is our general plan. This is going to be the bible for the next 30 years. And I would recommend that, maybe I wouldn't recommend it, you fall asleep, but I would recommend that you read this. Go to the library, get a copy, or ask, ask city staff for a copy of the policy document, and you will see the amount of thought that goes into putting a general plan together and, and sort of laying out the future for West Sacramento, and I thank you for that.
It is also available on the internet.
Yes.
Yeah, it's pretty thick. I don't have it.
Thank you. And David Tilly put a lot of work into this. He was at the helm for many years, so big kudos to David, and every department had a role in this, so it touches every aspect. Thank you.
All right, so that's it on item five. It's not scheduled for action this evening, but it will be back on November 16th. So item six is consideration of a workshop on the 21st Century Policing Report, which has just been incorporated into the draft general plan for 2035.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. First of all, I'd like to take a moment to again congratulate Councilman Kristoff. I have been employed with the city now for going on 30 years next month, and I'd like to say on behalf of the men and women of the Police Department, your contributions, service, and commitment to this community has been inspiring, so thank you, sir, for your service.
Thank you, that's very kind.
So again, so I'm Deanna Stevens, the Deputy Chief of the Police Department, and tonight we're doing a workshop presentation on 21st Century Policing. This is an update to a presentation that we've done previously on a quarterly report. So my job tonight, in essence, is to introduce Lieutenant Rob Strange, who will be giving this presentation this evening. You haven't met him formally, but Mr. Strange, Lieutenant Strange, has begun working with us. He started July of this year. He comes to us with 19 years of police experience. His last, your last assignment was the Chief Investigator of the Yolo County District Attorney's Office, so we are fortunate, very fortunate, to have him as a member of our administrative staff. So with that, Lieutenant?
Thank you for the introduction, and thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council, for the time to update you on our efforts around 21st Century Policing. And again, this is just more or less a progress report of the department's work towards implementation of many of the recommendations laid out in the 2014, sorry, 2015 Task Force Report. So really to, to kick things forward, it's really important to understand that our guiding principles within the department really mirror a lot of what that Task Force Report codified, and really just served to validate the efforts that were already underway in our department. So to that end, you know, trying to achieve the level of transparency that is necessary to, to build the public trust and maintain the public trust is essential to that. It's in line with the, the city's open data efforts, and again, it's always guided by that principle of trust, but verify both internally and otherwise. Again, around those efforts, we've created this comprehensive administrative dashboard and other reports that, that summarize our efforts around oversight within our department. And again, that's along the lines with the Task Force Report. And then also with RIPA or Assembly Bill 953, we've created a dashboard to report on our capacities to date, which we'll get to in a couple of minutes. And then our ComStat dashboards will continue to report and provide information on crime trends and what we see our major crime areas and concerns to be. So to the administrative report, beyond just the dashboard report that outlines our, our efforts around RIPA, we, we report on numerous different oversight areas, many of which currently fall under my area of operation in the department, the Constitutional Policing Division, and more specifically, the Professional Standards Unit. So again, lined out here is many of the different areas that we are constantly involved in evaluating. And then what has really occupied a lot of our focus in reporting and trying to analyze data is the requirements that AB 953 lays out. They're exist, exhaustive to a certain degree, but really understandable as far as moving towards complete transparency in the operations of a police department. Important to note is that we are not mandated as a department to comply with this until April 1st of '23. However, our efforts are definitely underway, and we're monitoring not only the available technology that will assist in capturing this data without incurring a bunch of extra human resource allocation, but we're also watching what bigger agencies are doing because their requirement kicks in in 2019. So a lot of the off-the-shelf products that will assist in this data capture should be really coming online ahead of that. So I'm just going to have Ms. Rankin flip through the next three slides. So in our RIPA dashboard report, we cover arrests, citations, and field interview cards, which are documentation reports of contacts between officers and folks in the field. So really, our capture right now for data has to result in one of those three areas. That is far from comprehensive as far as the contacts we make with the general public, but it is something that we can analyze at this point, and looking at it so far quarter over quarter, we're not seeing any major anomalies at this point. And then continuing our efforts with ComStat, the crime data dashboard, we won't always be able to be fortunate enough to report that our crime trends are, are pretty decent, but they are right now. I think most notable, looking at aggravated assaults, being down 2015 to 16, 29%, and then overall Part I crimes, major violent crimes, down 17%. Overall Part I crimes, including property theft, down 19%, again, year over year, 2015 to 16. Those are, those are remarkable numbers. We try not to get too excited with the sways one way or the other. Crime prevention's great, but it's probably not something that we can put a lot of faith in predicting sometimes, so we continue our best efforts to use the tool of ComStat to actually more, more finitely direct our resources to the areas that we see trends, and so that helps us hopefully run a more efficient operation. And then just lastly, I wanted to give an update around that 21st century idea of body worn cameras. This is something we've undertaken for, for some time in planning, and be happy to report that in working with City IT, we're going to be taking receipt of these devices in the near future and hope to have implementation within the first quarter of next calendar year. And then we're going forward still with our analysis capabilities and CLEA accreditation, so department accreditation, high-level national accreditation, that causes us to show that we actually walk our talk when it comes to policy and practice, is a big undertaking, and we hope to finalize that around the, or at least have our final onsite assessment in July of 2017. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Lieutenant. Are there questions since it's time from council?
Thank you, Lieutenant, for the presentation, and I want to take a moment to thank you and the rest of the leadership at the police force for all your work on this. I've learned, I'm not from the law enforcement background, certainly I don't, have not understood a lot of what goes into 21st Century Policing, let alone into your regular day jobs in law enforcement, and how you gather information, what's required, and probably, but what I've learned most about is really the, the challenge you have around the, the technology available to you to sort of even gather it all. So, but I appreciate the effort more than anything, and I want to comment to the public on that because you, this police force has been very forthright and try, as much as possible, transparent with myself in asking questions, as we develop sort of some conversations around 21st Century Policing. In this time and day and age around law enforcement, it's been quite, for me, a point of pride that our police force has come forward, tried to give, answer questions honestly if they didn't know, they're honest about that as well, and did your best to put together, pull together those reports. So I just want to thank you for that effort. I do have a couple of questions, if I may, around some, some areas. I did notice on the ComStat reports, some trends, and I just want to ask about them. Again, I'm careful not to extract or try to make any big leaps, but the one that sort of jumped out at me is on, if I'm trying to get back to it, I'm sorry, on the number of, just looking at some of the, the attention you draw onto some citations around, you really highlight in the age ranges on page 203. I know these are citations, but I also noticed arrests have gone down year over year on, on the age groups from 0 to 17. And I'm just, do you have any comment, or, or have we, I know we've put a lot of effort as a city in the, in the youth programs, and this is where I think the nexus between how a city, other services from what we do on the youth programs, to kind of seeing the results of, of what you do on the enforcement side. Is there any way to, and I'm always cautious of, is there the, the issue of correlation of, of facts, but I want to, it suggests to me that we're doing a better job, at least keeping youth away from arrests. Well, citations went up, I'm not sure what that would be, but I've seen the arrests went down year over year on the 017, which says kids aren't getting in trouble. They may be getting citations, I don't know what the citations would be around, but I'm trying to figure out, kind of extrapolate any kind of knowledge around that, or any qualitative, what you might think around that, that area.
I, I could probably speculate, but I don't know the exact breakdowns of what types of actual charges they were cited for or arrested for. I, I think we, it would be safe to say that, at least in recent years, there was oftentimes a disproportionate amount of those numbers associated with a small group of people that may have been repeatedly arrested in the, in the measuring timeframe.
Okay.
And that may have skewed some of that information substantially in some cases.
Is that something I can ask that maybe as a follow-up with the police force, maybe? I, I, it's going to understand where the arrest and citation, kind of where those are coming, just kind of what those breakdowns are, just to understand where they are coming from?
If I may also, so there was a proposition that was passed a couple of years ago, and a lot of the, the charges that we would book that were arrestable are no longer, they're misdemeanors, and so now we are citing for those offenses. So we have been tracking that. It's not anything that we see as being, you know, significant, although, you know, you do see a, a decrease, but we're more than happy to try to dig a little deeper into that.
And not to cause you too much more work, because I know there's a lot going into it, but it is something of interest to me, so if, again, maybe it's an offline follow-up, I would ask. And then I do have another question around, you mentioned in your report around the training that you're undergoing now, which is terrific that you're looking at how you're building training for officers. Is there, are you looking at other training, because I know this is a conversation happening all over the country around this notion of community-based policing and new training methods, or is there anyone at the department that's kind of, kind of looking outward at training around how we engage, how you engage individuals on the street from, for either around de-escalating situations verbally versus, versus not, and it could be other things, but are you actively looking at those types of training opportunities?
We actually do. So we do what is referred to as officer advanced training, and that particular training does incorporate de-escalation training as well as the, the training regarding the mental ill, yes, thank you, crisis intervention, I apologize. So all of that we are absolutely looking at. We readjust and look at our training matrix, and what that means is, we only have specific, you know, amounts of money that we can use for training, and so we prioritize that. So these are significant issues that are important to us, and so we are applying that appropriately. And the latest training, as a matter of fact, was this last week, and that was incorporated.
Okay. Thank you very much for, thank you very much.
Right, I should add, the, we have, the council established a subcommittee, an ad hoc subcommittee about this topic a while ago, a year, a year, maybe two years ago, out of the Street Planning Session, Mr. Ledesma and myself, and we have been like digging deep into the, into the issues that Mr. Ledesma's raised, and the technology and what's possible, and what the, what the trends are looking like, and with, with a huge amount of transparency and collaboration with the, with the leadership of the department. So it's been a, it's been a really great effort to this stage. The, the chief and I were at a session on 21st Century Policing with the US Attorney General last year in Arkansas, and picked up, you know, a lot of advice and, and collaboration from other, other cities and departments, but the, but our, but throughout the organization and the department, there's been a commitment to this. I'm, I'm, the, just the fact that we have a Constitutional Policing Division is a, is a pretty solid marker, I think, of the department's internal commitment, not out of some, not because of, you know, it's, it's, it's popular at the moment or whatever, and not because, you know, we've had the, the kinds of, you know, officer-involved fatalities that other departments have had to grapple with that. It hasn't been, we, we have not, but the department has, has been undertaking this because it's the right thing to do, and it's also the best way to, to achieve the kind of, the kind of trust and, and transparency that, that will lead to better enforcement, better policing, and safer policing to the, and so I also want to congratulate the, the department and the city manager and, and the other, the other departments that have contributed in terms of the data systems and what have you in order to, to make this kind of analysis possible. I do think for our purposes, at the policy level, the ComStat, these ComStat reports are still too granular, because they, you can't help yourself, you're, you're, for, for your purposes of figuring out, okay, what do we need to do in, you know, in the morning meeting, based on this data, to change, to, you know, to refocus resources or change our approach. But for, I think at the, for the, for the council level, you know, having longer-term trends, you know, more than just year-to-date 15 to 16, but you know, maybe over a longer period of time, so you could see, so at least you, you can catch yourself with some of the, okay, maybe that's just a blip, or it's a return, it's a return to normal, those sorts of trends, it's very hard, because your mind is, the human mind just constantly want to make trends out of anything, you know, if all you have is two data points on everything, and they're mostly small numbers. It's, it's like all the worst things, all the worst cognitive traps that you could put in front of us to lead us down the road of finding trends that, that may or may not exist. So I would, I think it would be helpful to maybe think about it, a way to, to, to shape it and summer, and give us a higher level summary of trend, and where you see trends to maybe clue us in, right? So, so maybe it comes with a cover saying, we've identified, you know, here's the report, maybe here's all the granular detail, but here's the, here's, here's what we've identified as three or four areas that we're watching, for, for example, that would help us to be able to interpret what's, what's real and also benefit from your professional judgment, you know, from what's behind the numbers. Mr. Johansson?
Yeah, I think this is a, a good report and going in the right direction. You know, as, as we know, the optics now are really important, particularly with police and citizen interactions. There's a heightened awareness on, on that interaction, and I think having this kind of data, and it sounds like more data is, is going to be available once the tools are there and once the infrastructure is there to get this data, to be able to not only make the decisions, but one of the things we looked at when we were first looking at this type of, you know, type of policing is looking at data that has a precursor for a problem that could be developing, so we can get on top of it, you know, and I know that race is, is entered in the system here. I think that's an important factor because I think, you know, the optics tend to center around race, but to also give the public confidence with this type of data that's available, you know, that the data is, is being acted on in a responsible way. So that, I think that's great. And then I think the other issue that Councilmember Ledesma talked was the, the, actually physically doing your job with folks that are, have mental issues, and that's another area right now where we've got a lot of eyes looking on these interactions and, and how to, you know, when do you use lethal force, for example? When do you escalate? When do you escalate? How do you de-escalate? But if you do escalate, you know, someone coming after you with, you know, a stick responded to with a shot, that type of thing. And, you know, I think that's part of what I'm hearing that your training is going to be about. And would that also be, you know, more hand-to-hand type stuff? So you'd be, officers would be more trained in grappling, so, you know, the first response is not?
So we actually do, you know, there was firearms training that we incorporate that de-escalation or forced de-escalation into, as well as defensive tactics. And believe it or not, one type of training that we call tactical communication. So the point to that is to really address the issues at the lowest level possible. Oftentimes, that doesn't work, but that is where we always try to begin. And so that is a heavy emphasis that we have with our, with our police in training. It's a big deal.
Now, is that something you would track? For example, you'd have twenty altercations during a year, and you would be able to say, well, five percent of these we were able to de-escalate at level one. One percent of these, you know, we obviously know what the result is, because there's someone that's hurt. But is there a way that you can measure how well that training's working in these? Like if you have twenty incidents, if everything's up to ten, or whatever the level is, is the training working? Or, you know, can you get most of these de-escalated to level four, whatever?
We don't have the ability to track that. We do track all of our uses of force, and that could be, well, any application of force. But that is really difficult to say, because, you know, how do you, how do you say if it, how do you say that it was successful or not if it didn't occur? So that, you know, so I, that's a really difficult one, I think, on that, on that tactical communication piece. But the others, we do in fact track, and we train too. So when we are actually scrutinizing each application of force, which we do, it goes through an entire review process, we will identify, if there are policy violations, then we address that. It could be through a disciplinary process. But the other ways that we do that is we actually come together with the subject matter experts, and we address that in training. And that, we also do that with driving, so pursuit driving, that's another big, hot topic amongst law enforcement. So that, that is in essence how we, how we try to attack that. But it's very difficult quantitatively or qualitatively, for that matter, to track something of whether or not you're successful if it didn't occur, if that makes sense.
Yeah, it does. Yeah, thank you.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for the report. I think it really is useful for us to be getting these regular reports. And so I hadn't thought of, the mayor suggested this longer time horizon, because I did fall in the trap of looking, you know, like in more into the kind of year-to-year or quarter-to-quarter. I have to commend the department. I was incredibly impressed with the preparation and the progress for this Kalia accreditation to actually undergo a pre-mock onsite inspection, to actually request that and go through that so that you can, we can be assured that we're, that we're going forward and things are going right along. That's just impressive. I can imagine that takes a lot of effort and time and kind of all hands on deck. So thank you for doing everything that you can to move that forward.
Yeah, and this system, it has already worked. I mean, the committee was, the subcommittee was partly impaneled with the notion of, okay, we need, how would we know if we were having issues around racially biased policing, geographically disparate policing? And so the part of, a central motivator for doing, for the council being this engaged in this was to figure out what are the right ways for us to answer those questions? And this is, this kind of dashboarding and analytics and stuff, we're central to that. But as we were going through that process, we did actually look at the data as well. And, you know, I think the, and which showed us, you know, okay, we can see that the north, for example, is not the most, the most of the arrests and citations and officer-involved stuff is not in the north of the city. And there's not a disproportionate, it's not racially disproportionate for Latinos, for example, in the city or for Asian-Americans. So it was, that's what this, that's, you know, at the highest level, that's what this information is for, is for us to be able to, because the, sort of the day-to-day, like, you know, what is, what is the response, you know, what is the cause of increased larceny, but less burglary or whatever? We, I, we know that we have the, you know, one of the best departments in the world, and that you're on that. But our job is also to make sure that, you know, outside of those larger issues, that, you know, at least other departments have demonstrated that they don't, they don't have a handle on themselves, that we have the, we have a window to be able to enforce some level of public accountability. And this sort of data is essential, it's the most essential tool for that, for that to work. We do have a challenge, and I think you, I mean, you've identified it repeatedly, and it's not as big of a challenge in some of the East Coast and Southern cities, where the racial issues are really mostly black and white. And so this issue around officer assessment of an individual's race can be much more problematic in California and in our region, where it isn't always so clear whether somebody is Latino or Filipino or Sikh or, you know, one of the intermediate racial or ethnic groups. And, but an officer is still required to, you know, to record what the race of that individual was, usually based only on their own, on their own guess. And so, and that matters not so much in the big picture, but when we start to look at, at small numbers, you know, small numbers of, you know, particular kinds of crimes or incidents or officer-involved incidents or what have you, then it does become important, you know, having just a couple of misclassifications can be a big deal. And so I know the department's paying a lot of attention to this, the technologists are trying to pay attention to this, connecting databases in order to get other forms of validation around races is out there as well. But it is, it is not magic. I mean, we're all trying, we're trying to build this along with everyone else at the same time, and it's very much appreciated. And on the force issue, I just want to point out, we don't, we never, we rarely know when, when, when one of these incidents of use of force goes the other direction. And we have, we had, you know, it wasn't, it was just a few weeks ago, when we had one of these incidents that if it were one of these other places that dominate the national media, there might be some deceased suspects. But instead, we had officers end up in the hospital, you know, with serious, with serious injuries. And there is a, and that's a tremendous amount of courage, but for us, it's often easy to talk about the training and everything that is necessary. But in that moment, you know, those officers went to the hospital, and in that, and for that day, you know, people, I hope, appreciated it. But we sometimes forget that there, that, you know, that that's the risk that's being taken every day in our, in our data. If we can, we should know that too, right? What's, you know, what's the, what's the trade-offs that are involved in terms of the safety of our officers in addition to the safety of suspects? So all of this is helpful in us getting in that direction. We do have one request to speak on the item, so if you would grab your seats and we'll get back to you. And that's by Maria Grahava.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I just wanted to provide comment and give you my first ten experience. The end to thank, I guess, Chief McDonald for working as intensely as he is. I actually met with him from my nonprofit organization and also with the broad, it's a community, not a gang. And we actually met with the chief on a regular basis. And part of what he was incorporating was his 21st century. And one of the things that I was able to share with him is that in the past twenty-five, thirty years, there's actually have been a national trend. So that's the trend that we're seeing in this report. It's actually a national trend where the crime rate has gradually been dropping. But one of the things that we gathered, that we met with Chief McDonald was, we were, it was about gathering information about the gang injunction. And, and in fact, I believe it was Assemblyman Kevin McCarty that has actually asked Tom McDonald for some data justifying the gang injunction. Because as you probably know already, we have such a high direct file county-wise. And so one of the things that we noted when we were talking with Tom McDonald is that when the charges are being filed, the gang enhancement is Penal Code 365 or something like that. It's automatically added to the charge. And so one of the things that he's reviewing and reconsidering under this 21st century is not automatically, creating some kind of a criteria that's going to determine when to use these gang enhancements. And the other thing that we suggested that was very important is that probation be informed when a youngster is subject to gang validation. Because sometimes these youngsters are on probation for many, many years, and the probation doesn't know that they're about to get validated as a gang member. And so it's important that this happened, because one of the things that we want to avoid is Ferguson situation. And so we also were able to find out that there's an opt-out form that the public can fill out if they're, if they're listed on the, as a validated gang member. I was able to present that form. It's an opt-out form. And so, so anyway, so I just wanted to comment that Chief McDonald is actually making a sincere effort as far as a lot of community members believe in, in creating a public trust, which is really, really important. Thank you for this opportunity to speak.
All right, thank you. All right, this was a presentation and direction only, so there's no further action on it. But thanks again to the department. Item seven is consideration of an information item about the draft scope of work for the I Street Bridge Deck Conversion Project. Mr. Doherty.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. Chris Doherty from the Public Works Department. The item before you this evening is a information item about the scope of work for the I Street Bridge Deck Conversion Feasibility Study. The I Street Bridge is a historic railroad bridge originally constructed in 1911. The bridge has been a vital connection linking West Sacramento to downtown Sacramento since the thirties, when a roadway deck was constructed on the upper deck. The I Street Bridge Replacement Project, which is, will replace the I Street Bridge with a bridge to the north, will remove vehicular access to this structure in 2021, creating an opportunity to convert the upper deck of the I Street Bridge to a bicycle and pedestrian connection. This will retain that vital connection that we have from the Washington neighborhood to downtown Sacramento, as the new connection will be moving approximately a quarter mile to the north, to the rail yards area. In December of 2015, city staff applied to the Caltrans Sustainable Communities Transportation Planning Grant Program in partnership with the City of Sacramento to fund a feasibility study to explore this option for this facility. The city was successful in obtaining that grant and was notified of award in June. And we are currently working with Caltrans to finalize the agreement to make, to free up those funds so we can start the project. We expect that we would be starting that work approximately in January of 2017, once we get authorization to move forward from Caltrans and bring a consultant on board. The feasibility study will identify any physical legal barriers to move this project forward, and identify, identify the partners required for the project, and any permitting and environmental requirements needed. The study will also identify opportunities for the construction of the new access structures to the bridge, as the existing access structures will be coming down with the construction of the new bridge to the north, including the viaduct on the Sacramento side. So they'll need new access structures to access the upper deck. And in addition to the feasibility study, staff is recommending the creation of an ad hoc three-by-three advisory committee comprised of representatives from each of the partner cities to oversee this project moving forward. This concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, are there questions from staff at this time?
So your staff, is there public comment?
Uh-huh.
Go ahead and do that.
Mayor Tim Sandy?
I just, I, when I was reading through the outline, it struck me, I, it may be in here and I just didn't see it, was the feasibility of partners, is that also feasibility of funding partners? Or is it just feasibility of, like, decision-making partners?
It will be feasibility of locating funding for constructing the bridge as well, or the new structures.
It seems like that's just, that's a pretty enormous part. So maybe if it could, if that gets pulled out in the description of the project, of this work, because it just seems really significant to me to move this forward. Could be my bias as a fundraiser.
I one thousand percent agree. All right, are there questions at this time?
Yeah, I do. You talked about a three-by-three process set up that wouldn't include three council members from West Sacramento, though. They can't, you really can't do that.
No.
Yeah, okay.
We would envision the council appointing the members of that three-by-three committee.
Okay, okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, we have one request to speak on this item, and it's by Maria Grahava.
Thank you for this opportunity to provide comment. I wanted to, it's my understanding that fourteen thousand dollars has already been set aside for the I Street Bridge. And then this would be an additional grant application. That's my understanding. I don't know enough details, to be honest. But I really don't think that the I Street Bridge is as important as some of the needs of the north, especially along West Capitol Avenue. It may be the flashing lights for the crosswalk is not the solution, but it's a start. And so fourteen thousand dollars would go a long way on West Capitol Avenue. I don't know if this would involve any caps and trades money, because I'm not familiar enough. But I do know that the caps and trades money that was awarded involves money for the underdeveloped communities. And so I think there's, the I Street Bridge is really not a priority. I think West Capitol Avenue is a bigger priority. I would also like to request participation in the three-by-three committees that, a committee that would be forming, myself, my nonprofit, LULAC, League of Women Voters, and of course, for the public in general. Thank you so much for this opportunity.
All right, thank you. Okay, we'll turn to the council on Mr. Ledesma.
Thank you. Thanks, Chris, for bringing this to attention. And this is something we've been contemplating for some time, and it could be a really exciting project. There's a notable, somewhat notable exclusion, or at least doesn't cover, so Union Pacific owns the rail, the bridge. And to me, so can you provide me kind of an update? Have we talked to them? Have we started discussion with them? It seems that their, the feasibility, you know, really starts and ends with them. Are they open to this, or have we approached them?
As I understand it, this process would definitely bring them in as a stakeholder to identify if they are a barrier or not. But there have been, I think, some low-level discussions that would indicate that they, I believe, are interested in seeing this move forward.
Those sounds like the exact words that an invitation to UP would be well received. Would you like to be a stakeholder to identify if you are a barrier?
I think that's, the, all joking aside, it is a bit of how we approach this. So I caution or I'd advise that we approach them, that, we approach them in the right way, that this is a, this could be a community benefit. Certainly would allow folks from West Sacramento to walk or bike, continue to use the bridge in a, in a manner that it was intended to cross the river. And it's used already by the, by the terrain. It could be a big community enhancement for Union Pacific. So let's invite them in the proper way and?
And if I could, we have spoken with Union Pacific about a year ago, even before we applied for this feasibility grant, and they're aware of it, know that we have an agreement on, for transportation purposes, on their privately-owned bridge, and that we'd like to maintain transportation on that. So I think there's an open mindset going in, that they haven't laid down some sort of gamut that we're not going to be on that bridge, and we're going to engage them in the process.
Okay, that's what I wanted to hear. So thank you.
Yeah, I, it's a, as we, as we keep the reports and the documents coming, attending to the language, the language around how to communicate best with UP is important. And also the language about how we're describing the project, so that we, to the maximum extent possible, stay within the authorized purposes, the bridge. We currently have the right of way to use the bridge would be important. And so, so it's one of, and it's one of the reasons I want to be careful about this three-by-three committee. Because you said the word oversee, we're overseeing, we and the City Council of Sacramento are overseeing this project. This is a, the three-by-three would be a means for, you know, for some feedback, some guidance along the way. But I, we're not creating a JPA or some other governance entity that's going to, this is a central project for both cities. And it's complicated, and it's, you know, and there's, you know, not insignificant resources involved. And it's going to, it's not, this isn't a typical transportation project, right? So the other thing I would say, we need to be very careful not to scope this as though we're building, you know, the bridge over, over, you know, the bike bridge at Sycamore. Sycamore. It's not that kind of project. We're, so we don't want to, like, develop our whole plan through public input and outreach, and, you know, a survey on the internet, plus 16 workshops and all that, and we identify, we want, we want this thing to look exactly like this, and it has to have all these amenities, and it has to do all these things, and then we go to UP and they're like, no, we can't, we can't possibly do that, and, right, or we go, or then we have to raise the money for it, and the one person, you know, and, and we might have gotten, you know, I don't know, Mercy Healthcare to, to, to be the sponsor of this, of this bridge, but when they see this, this thing that's now a $50 million bike and pedestrian facility, they're like, okay, no, that's not even a, that's not reality. We have to own that project in order to be nimble and look for the, the only ways we're going to make this happen is if we're highly opportunistic, and take advantages of, of quick openings in a negotiating position with UP, of quick openings in potential funding and sponsorships that may emerge, and none of that will work if we plan this project all the way, all the way to the waterfall, and have it completely exactly what we want, and then start asking people for their, their support and their money. And I think this gets partly to the, the point that Mayor Protem Sandin was, was raising as well, that, that if we, at least I was inspired by, by the Highline project in, in New York, and others that are similar, that, that aspire to be much more than just a way to get from point A to point B. The point A to point B is really critical here. This is the, one of the most significant pieces of infrastructure for the north part of our city, so I wouldn't be supportive of moving the money out of the north and onto West Capitol Avenue. So this is, this is a critical project for the, for the north, but for, but really for the whole, the whole community. So point A to point B is important, because with the new bridge landing at Rail Yards Boulevard, there won't be, this will be the only way for pedestrians and cyclists to get into what is today the heart of downtown in an easy way, and so it's, it's critical that we maintain that, that point A to point B access, but it should be, and can be so much more than that, in terms of being, being a linear park, being a place for public art to be installed, a place for, you know, for other, for other, as a destination in and of itself, like the Sydney Opera House. It can, it can be so much more than that, but that will, that would mean capturing the imagination of potential funders, because those, that, the Highline could never have been built based on a Caltrans grant, right? That it required an inspired group of people and donors to make something truly special happen, and so we, we ought to, we have to make sure we're proceeding at each step, including composing this committee in ways that are going to contribute to, at least maximizing the chance that we could produce such a thing, with the, with the, with the connectivity obviously being the central, you know, the most important objective, but we should be able to do much, much more than, than, than just that, so. I think this is, this is, it's great that we, that we have secured this grant, this was a big step forward on a, on a project. We have some time, because the existing, you know, the upper deck's not going to go away as a principal mode of transport until 2020, anyway, so we do have a little bit of time on this, but to think, the comments that have been made are all right on track in terms of how to make sure we optimize our, our chances here, so. All right, any other questions or direction? All right, thanks, Mr. Doherty. That brings us to item eight, which is consideration of an expenditure plan for Measure E, and this, this is a report prepared by the Mayor Protem and I. So the, this, at the, in, in, when the council adopted the Measure E proposition and the ballot language for the proposition, which was, is to fund city services initiatives such as repairing roads, building and maintaining bicycle pedestrian trails, reducing homelessness and its community impacts, improving educational career opportunities for youth, and enhancing internet access and the use of smart technologies. Those were the, the areas of expenditure. We described the, the purposes in the council session in much more detail, to make sure that we were, what we were proposing to the voters in terms of purposes was accomplishable within the, within the envelope of what the resources were, because, of course, we have many, many more needs and objectives in the city than even, even that expansive list, but we had to, had to, at least partially at that time, calibrate what resources were projected from Measure E against what we would actually be delivering under the, under the objectives that were articulated in the proposition, and so we had a working, working document around an expenditure plan for, for those elements, and so we came forward with two tasks in this item. The first one was to, was to put that, that rough expenditure plan into a, into a more tangible form, and you recall when we discussed this in June, I think, when we, when we, when we took that vote, we were roughly devoting about a third of the resources in a conceptual way to roads and trails, both the Trails Initiative and other bike and pedestrian trails in, throughout the city. So roughly a third there, roughly a third to the youth, preschool, college, and internship space, excuse me, and then the remainder to a mix of homelessness strategies, that is housing services and enforcement on homelessness, and on the smart technologies and broadband and internet access, including the, we were discussing at the time, the 21st Century Mobility, age-friendly, and some of the other technology solutions that we'd articulated. So we described it in that way, and we're, we're trying, as we try to get to increasing levels of clarity for budget planning purposes, but also be able to clear with, clear with the voters about what, what is, what is actually, where are we actually doing with these resources? To, the, what's recommended here is that we, not tonight, but tonight simply to begin the discussion, to, to, to start to give clearer form to that. Secondarily, the second, the second piece and the longer piece in this item, because it's more complicated, is on the youth piece of the, of the, of the expenditure plan. So the, we, the city operates, obviously has departments for all of the other elements, with the exception of homelessness services. We, the, and so we have before, through Measure J and K, done the road repair program with the resources from, from, from that measure, and the Public Works Department manages that. It goes through our regular budget process. We have the pavement management system, and it's entirely a city-directed enterprise, and we, and the administrative cost of that is completely an existing function of the, of city government. Same thing on the bicycle and pedestrian trails and the Trails Initiative. This is an, this is a city department, or two, or three, that have the jurisdiction here, they have the administrative infrastructure to do so, this is part of their regular work. We have a process for identifying what are their priorities, what's the scope and all of that, and, and so on and so forth. The one area where that is only partially true is on the, is on the educational and career opportunities for youth. Preschool has been, is, you know, is a, a unit within the Parks and Recreation Services, and has its own steering committee that Mayor Protem chairs, although we work with other partners as well. But the other elements, as we started to scope them out more clearly, and it was clear from the conversation that we had at council in June, was that we didn't want to, we didn't want to create a whole new city infrastructure that would be delivering the, you know, a college promise, or an expanded, or expanded preschool, or the internships, and, and so one of the central directions that we got was, okay, we, we, we want to do this, but we don't want it to become an administrative function of the city, and we don't have that. So the, and the nature of the educational and career opportunities for youth elements are multi, essentially long-term future commitments to young people, that to do this now so that you can go to college later, it's important to essentially perform something close to an actuarial analysis to make sure that the, we, that the resources are adequate to be able to meet that commitment, unlike the other areas where we're, we're essentially can go on a pay-as-you-go basis for trails and roads and homeless and shelters and, and enforcement, and some of the smart technology pieces, which we can, we can do on an annualized basis and see as we're going. With the, with the education and youth piece, if we don't, if we do it that way, we run the risk of making more commitments than we can afford, and that's obviously not prudent fiscally. So we, and, and so in this, in the kids' home run or the youth, youth and career and education piece, the intention has been that we would be, we would be a leverage point working with other partners to, on the actual delivery, where we would be, we would still be involved, but that the, you know, rather than us creating a whole financial aid program administered, you know, in the Administrative Services Division, that we would, we would partner up with the, with Los Rios Community College District, or Sacramento City College, or some other educational institution, that we would, rather than develop a whole new department in, in charge of badging and, and internships, that we would partner with the, with LRG and Future Ready, the ones that we already do on the nonprofit side, and so forth. And so could we construct a administrative alignment for the Education and Youth Career Initiative, a portion of Measure E that would minimize our administrative responsibilities and maximize what we could accomplish, given a finite and limited amount of resources, so that the education, youth, and career piece doesn't consume a larger share of Measure E into the future? And so that's what, so what is in the, the second recommendation to start the consideration of this item, again, not for adoption tonight, is, is that kind of a framework to kind of, to lay that out. In order to accomplish that, we did some, you know, pretty extensive financial analysis, projections of growth, city growth, growth in the number of four-year-olds, growth in the number of high school graduates, then the growth in the number of, of students, of young people in the city that parents decide to send to local schools, growth in the numbers of local youth who go on, who choose to go into college, and who are eligible to go into college, so on and so forth. So some pretty aggressive and, but conservative assumptions in that model, to assure that we would have, that 10, 15 years out, we still have sufficient resources within Measure E in order to meet those commitments. I would say one other thing about this particular component, as I, in several of these areas, you know, we are, we have been, and we are a regional, statewide, and national leader, and, you know, at least one of the presidential candidates is fully committed to universal preschool for everybody, not just West Sacramento's, and so if that were to, if that were to occur, high-quality preschool became available for everyone in the community because of a, of a federal program, or even the kinds of changes that have been happening at the state level between the governor and our Assemblyman McCarty and others, that that would then free up these resources to return to the, you know, to the Measure E, to the other Measure E purposes. And I, that, you know, given what's happening at the White House next week, that may be true in a longer-term frame on the college promise and some of these other elements as well. So just as with Measure J and K, these are, these are intended to be sort of planning, planning parameters, as opposed to, they're, they're not appropriations or budgets, they're simply planning parameters. On the, on the education piece, it's necessary, because we've been approached by Los Rios and Sacramento City College, they're ready to, they want to do this with us, but, you know, we, they, they need us to describe, well, what is the, what is the thing that we would be doing together, and once we can describe that, they're, they're more or less ready to go. On the, the college savings piece, we've, we've been consulting with Oakland and San Francisco, who've been, have similar programs, they've had the same experience with some of their local financial institutions. So the partners that, that we've articulated in the, in this grid are, are definitely interested, ready to go, but, but need to know what the overall framework looks like. In addition, we're going to be in, in DC next week, trying to excite some of the major foundations nationally, who are going to be at this College Promise Summit to make investments here as part of that work, just as we, as we're doing on preschool as well. So it's a long introduction, but it's a fairly extensive and kind of high-impact item, so I thought it deserved it. Mayor Protem Sandin, did you want to add anything? I know you're, I know you're here, just, I know you're here despite a virus fighting you, but so appreciate you. All right, so are there, are there questions at this time? We also have a couple of requests to speak, but Mr. Johansson?
Yeah, just on the, on the college savings account, so, so one of the things that's happening is, there's incentives when the kids are in, senior in high school, too, get them into scholarship programs, there's catching the kids at the early stage of the universal preschool, there's a badging system that helps build credibility, build a portfolio for the students. On the college savings account, so if a child enters kindergarten and leaves, is there a risk of, you know, I don't know why a parent would come for a college savings account, but, you know, is there a length of time that the kids would have to be in there, or is it just you're in kindergarten, yours a match? I, just kind of an explanation of what the...
So the, the college savings account, once it, once it's created, is owned by the, by the family, so if, so if, if it's, if it's created and we were to deposit $50 in it, and the bank were to match some, it would be portable, so if they decided to enroll in first grade somewhere else, or they moved out of the city altogether, they would, they would keep that with them. I think that's, and I'm pretty sure that's how it works in San Francisco and, and Oakland as well. It's a very small amount of money, you know, relative to the, to the total, and at least in San Francisco, it's leveraged a much larger amount from the, from the Citibank is the sponsor there, and so Citibank, so the, the, San Francisco itself puts in about twice as much, I think, as what's in here per, per child, but then Citibank matches parental contributions, it matches parental, essentially the equivalent of a direct deposit or Christmas, Christmas account, ongoing contribution, so for them, it's a, it's a good business proposition too, but most of the, of the, of the funding is provided by the, by the financial partner and all the administration.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so we have a couple of requests to speak on this item, and the first is by Danny Theracol.
Hello, thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Danny Theracol, I'm a local resident here in West Sacramento, and I just wanted to voice my concerns on this measure. I am pretty undecided on whether to vote for or against the measure, and I just have a problem really, the, that the revenue is not, there's no specific issues or programs that this extra tax revenue will actually go to. Specifically, the, what you were talking about, the education and youth addition in the measure, education to me is very important, and I don't think it's appropriate to keep that open-ended. I think that if we want to invest in education, invest in students, and children at a very young age, we should make that definite. Recently, I was grateful enough to be part of the Summer Steps internships that you are able to help me be part of, and I was one of the lucky 20, and specifically, I would like to make sure that if this measure were to go through, that the tax money would help not only provide that internship, but provide even more opportunities past the 20 students that were able to do it. Not only that, I, I just, I would like some clarification, if possible, that I know that you're not allowed to respond to public comments, if, before the election, that you can release a statement on exactly what are the priorities of what that extra tax money will go to, because I understand that it's a limited amount, the estimated is 3.3 million, and although that is a lot of money, it can't be used to solve every single issue at one time. Thank you.
Thank you. And Maria Guralva?
Thank you for this opportunity to speak. Thank you for trying to be more specific regarding Measure E. I am against this proposal because it's a perpetual tax, a perpetual sales tax. We already have Measure K, which is a sales tax, and as I understand from conversations I had, Measure K was not actually adopted as a permanent tax, but when Measure V was adopted, that was when there was a clause including, that converted Measure K into a perpetual tax. And so I am very much against this, again, I'm against having a planning parameters only. I, I really seriously think that the city needs to get out of the business of running preschools. As it stands, the city got all the Head Start money, all the federal Head Start money, the school district did not receive Head Starts money. It's really, really not the business of the city to be having this preschool college, presumably we're regional leaders, but that's not, that's really just nice propaganda. The fact is that we don't have parks and recs, it's, it's not in the business of providing preschool. The district is in charge of preschool, so it's really important that we have our boundaries clear and our roles clear, because I'm not sure why the, why the city, or how the city would become involved in offering a college savings accounting program, if that's what I just heard, and, and of course, the, the badging, this, this digital badge. I remember when you came back and you were on NPR talking about the digital badge, and the digital badge got incorporated, but the school district was never asked if they wanted to participate. And, you know, regarding this grant, Cindy Tuttle told the school that it, only the city could apply for this grant, and it turns out that the school district can also apply for this grant, but the school district was told that they could not apply for this grant. And so when the city gets involved in preschool and applying for Head Start grants, it puts you in, in, in conflict, or it puts you in competition with the school district, and so we want the school district to be a school district, we don't want the city to be running preschools, it's just, it, the dots do not connect, and... And so I would really beg you to consider to get out of the preschool business and please stop trying to give the impression that we are leaders when we're not, we, we're not leaders. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, Dana, I know the, the council can't respond. It's the item 1A that we, we are not allowed to. We just don't do, we don't do it in, in the moment. We don't do live, live responses, so. So along those lines, just to be clear, the part, the purpose of, one of the purposes tonight is to provide that clarity and to expand exactly the thing that we're doing in Summer Steps, frankly. That, that we've had great success with that program at City Hall. And we've had a lot of employers who've said that they're also ready to step up. But if we just do that one at a time, it's not, we're not able, we're, we're able to see what we, what's possible with every kid, every young person in our community, but we're not able to deliver it. And Summer Steps can, even if we doubled Summer Steps and served 40, 40 students or, or tripled it, and again, it's still, it's still nowhere near the need and the demand for, for young people to be able to get real-world opportunities and real-world application of their knowledge. So that's, that's why in this, in this framework tonight, it is, it is precisely around the notion of making a promise to, to young people that yes, if you prepare in school, that you will then be eligible for a, a, a paid internship in the city and that we're, we're going to, we're going to make that promise to every student in the city. And that's, so that's the, that's the animating philosophy behind this, this framework is that it is important for young people to know from the very beginning, and parents to know from the very beginning, that the city is with them and that if you, if you, if you, if you sign up for preschool, if you take the, if you take the tougher courses, if you sign up for the Engineering Academy or the Culinary Academy, that you, that it will pay off and that we're, and we're not going to, we, we can't push you across the line, but we're going to be, we're going to be the wind at your back as a young person in our community. Because we, educational opportunity is the most important thing in our city for, for young people. But it's also central to the city's function. Because one of the number-one reasons why folks leave our, our community or don't come here in the first place is, is their concern about educational outcomes and opportunity. We hear this all the time. And the school district is doing a fantastic job of tackling those issues. But they're much deeper than, than anything the school district can do all by itself. And, and so this is the, in some senses, as we did with preschool, it's the city stepping up to say, we're with you. I mean, we're, you know, grades K through 12, you, you, you know, we're, we're going to back you up every, around the work that you're doing in order to achieve that. So it's important for the whole community. It's also important for our ability to keep attracting good-quality jobs because we have a major problem in this city. It's maybe the most significant one in some ways. That we have a lot of good-paying jobs, we're very attractive to companies who want to locate, you know, research facilities here, engineering facilities, manufacturing facilities. And yet we still have a high unemployment rate because our young people don't have, and our, and our adults don't have those skills. And the only way for us to solve that is long-term through these kinds of, of policies and investments in developing a strong workforce and opening up opportunities that are right under our noses in this community at places like Bear Crop Science or, you know, or, or at NorCal Beverage for, for good-paying, with benefits, family-supporting jobs that too many of our residents can't qualify for. They can't even get an interview. And so these kinds of policies are, they're not just about trying to, trying to improve education. They're, they are central to the city's efforts to try to improve social cohesion, strengthen our workforce and strengthen our economic development in a, in a big way. So that, just, and, and I just want to clarify, because Mayor Pretend Sandin is the Chair of the Universal Preschool Board. This has been one of the most significant partnerships between the city and the school district that has ever been undertaken. And so every, every communication we've received from the school district is that they are thrilled about both Measure E, but also about the work we have been doing on preschool as we are. And from parents who appreciate the choices that they have, both from preschools that are operated by the school district, preschools that are operated by, you know, learning ladders and our Early Learning Services Division, as well as the many family and private preschool providers that we have helped along the way to be part of a, an ecosystem that makes, you know, has been celebrated by the White House and so many others as, as truly a national model, so. All right, so now we've gotten through those. Are there, are there, Mr. Ledesma?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate you spending some time going through the education element of the spending plan, expenditure plan for Measure E. And, you know, this was a very thoughtful endeavor. We, we proposed Measure E earlier in the summer. And now it's on the ballot, and I certainly appreciate the comments about wanting to make sure people are understanding what's intended. And you did explain that the, the other priorities that we have laid out for them is around repairing roads, building and maintaining bicycle and pedestrian trails, something we just heard about in Pats, was something we just heard about earlier today, or earlier tonight, about how important that is in our community, making sure we have opportunities and funding for that. And then reducing homelessness and reduce the impacts of homelessness. And then enhancing internet access across the community, in addition to education. So those are the areas that we have focused on and are prioritizing and targeting. And just like we have in Measure K, and we get the report, the city staff will have to come back and then ask how they'll, they'll use those funds, make sure it's, it's in line with those purposes. So I'm supportive of this, I'm, of kind of what you've laid out, what's laid out in the staff report, a way of a spending plan, because I think, I'm going to read that as is opportunities in addition to what we have destroyed General Fund, what supports those, all those various areas. Coming back, once this passes, coming back with more strategic views of how Measure E will augment what we're doing. I think that's the part that excites me about Measure E because for the past few years, ever since the recession, and, and for instance, the road fund, knowing that we don't have enough, it's coming up short in some areas. Then we have some ways to use Measure E funds to help do those, the tasks of fixing roads. We have funds available to improve pedestrian bike rideaways. I'm looking forward to those actual plans putting in place, how we can leverage these dollars into more dollars. I'm supportive of what you've laid out on the educational side because it is a hard concept to understand for me. I'm not in the education business either. But I do understand the investment in people this represents, which is, to me, a significant step in how we're approaching, how we're approaching our government. The preschool has been wonderfully, our endeavors and initiative have been wonderfully accepted into our community because it does provide parents choices in their community about how to get good-quality preschool. There's, that, that, that program in and of itself would have been worthy of this. But the fact that we can take it and, and the part that I was worried about was about the building of infrastructure, that there's ways you can do it without it, that you can leverage existing organizations to actually implement those things. That was what I'm reading back from this framework is the most encouraging part because we want to make sure our city government here, what we're in the business for, just like we've given up and leased operations at the port to a service provider that knows the maritime business. Here, we're going to have experts that would be able to implement college savings accounts. They'll be able to administer other types of learning opportunities. And we will just be the provider of that program, making sure our people have that investment. And if that, that to me is sustainable and one that we can, we can, we can, to me, again, the preschool on and in of itself would have been worth what we're doing in Measure E to give that program a sustainable source of funds going forward. But adding these other elements is, is, is really promising, and I'm looking forward to that. And I'm looking forward to Measure E really start again for the rest of the elements we're, we're looking at, that it would help fund. I'm looking forward to see staff using those funds in, in a way that can really help those, yes, I'm looking at using the title, how they can help push those forward and, and, and see some of our visions of better bike paths and trails and whatever else come into fruition. So I appreciate the opportunity to have this in front of us.
Yeah, thank you for bringing the focus back also to the larger expenditures, even on the road repair with the, with the, with Measure J and K. And we call, Measure, Measure K was a two, two-part sales tax measure. There was a half cent, one-quarter cent that was permanent and one-quarter cent that was one time, that was for a limited period of time, for a decade, I think, a decade. And it was Measure V that extended the, the, the capital quarter cent. So it wasn't a provision slipped in. It was very intentional by the voters in Measure K to say, for things that are ongoing expenses, we should have an ongoing sales tax. And for things that are, are, are one-time capital projects, like library improvements or streetcar construction, that, then those will be one-time funded and, and they don't require an ongoing expenditure. But in Measure, in Measure J, Measure E, I'm sorry, Measure J and K with the road, road rehab money that we put in that, into that proposition, we were able to repair virtually, you know, virtually every road in the city. I mean, we, we were able to achieve one of the best pavement management system index records in the whole region as a result of that investment. Measure E, under this expenditure plan, we'd be devoting 25% more money per year to road rehabilitation than we did even in Measure J and K. And we would be doing it for the long term as opposed to knowing we could only do it one time, which is all, was, which would allow us to have a much more strategic investment plan with respect to road rehabilit, road rehabilitation and repair. So you're, you're right, some of these, we didn't, because they don't have the second set of recommendations, they're not covered as much here, but they're very, very significant. I mean, if we have the very, if we have the best roads and sidewalks in the whole region, that's great for our quality of life. It's also, you know, excellent for our ability to keep, you know, well, one to reduce people's, you know, car, car, car repairs, but also to attract, you know, companies and, and good jo, good-paying jobs to our city as well. And that's, so that's, that's an example of one of the other very big items that's in this, in this, in Measure E as we envisaged it in June. Mayor Pretend Sandin? Mr. Johansson?
Yeah, maybe just a, a couple of quick ones. The, yeah, I just wanted to kind of point out the internet access and the, the mobility issue and homelessness. You know, one of the things we just got through talking about in our general plan was broadband access. And we've talked about that a number of times here, that, you know, as we try to provide more services online through the city or folks are expecting a certain type of broadband service within a city, we need the tools to be able to help provide that, particularly folks in underserved areas that don't have broadband access. And so, you know, this $500,000 estimate that this potentially could, could garner, again, that would be used as basically seed money for others like the California Emergency Technology Fund or there's a number of other groups that could provide funding and partner with us to try to roll out broadband access or Wi-Fi access, which allow the city to do even more through technology and reduce the cost of providing that service, which would free up money for streets and roads and some other things. So things will just kind of escalate. So this really is an investment, I think, you know, in the, in the future of the city. And in terms of homelessness, you know, one of the main things that we hear at council here is mostly the impacts of homelessness. And we do have a lot of homeless advocates that speak to, in terms of the homeless folk side. But the problem is there's just not enough money to do what we need to do. And so what this would do is allow us, you know, pending further policy implementation or policy guidance, would be to help institutionalize some type of homeless program here that would not only, you know, reduce the impacts in terms of the community impacts of homelessness, but also looked at, you know, how can we actually help the homeless people? How can we get them into services more effectively? How can we help them find homes within West Sacramento? And then those types of things, kind of like what we did with Bridge to Housing. So all that takes money, and, you know, this, I think, is a good, a good avenue to do it. And I, I think that's mentioned, you know, Measure J and K, I think, I think there's overwhelming public support for what we did there. And a lot of that was because we were transparent. We put out reports on a periodic basis on that we were spending the money. We said we, how we'd spend it. And so you, basically, we've been able to build up trust. And I think it looks like we're going down that same route with Measure E to continue with that trust and spend this as we're saying we're going to spend it.
Mr. Kristoff?
Yeah, well, I certainly hope that we will, in essence, go down that same path as far as making reporting goes. Because I think it is one thing that the community, I'm not going to say they'll look forward to it, but at the same time, when we do present it, they understand what we've spent the money on, what we said we'd spend the money on. And I think the community really appreciates the fact that we do that kind of an accounting. I think that this Measure E proposal is, it's a good proposal. I mean, it's, I would probably try to tweak some of the intended expenditures. For me, I think that the city, it really exists for one purpose, and that's to protect our citizens. These kinds of tax dollars are, they're okay for pedestrian trails and all these other kinds of things. But the, the one thing that you really need to remember is police protection, fire protection, levy protection. We protect the community. Those should be our priorities at all times. And I think that I would spend money on these purposes that have been outlined here. But I'd probably take a little from each one and give it to our police department, our fire department, and, and maybe even our levy departments. I'm not saying for big programs or anything, but just sort of tweak this money around so that those kinds of services are maybe one little step above where they are now. There may be some pilot program in traffic management. There may be some pilot program with fire protection for things that people put in their house. There, and of course, there's going to be the need for flood protection monies. Maybe it could buy a pump station. I don't know what it is. But I just think that money should be invested in each one of those. Because some of these other programs, like you take homeless, it goes down a rattle. You never see it again. You get one-time expenditure, but it, it's, it's not everlasting. And so I would think that when this comes back, I would like to see some kind of expenditure for our core services. I think what we've done here is good. I think that, that Up for West Sac has been an absolutely marvelous program for preschool. It has gotten a lot of kids ready for kindergarten. And I have talked to some teachers that said that this is really helpful. So I, I, I think that there are things that we can do. I, I've never been involved in a college savings account or a college promise and that sort of thing. I haven't been involved in any of those kinds of policies or programs that do that. So, but I mean, I think that I've got a lot of people up here that are very wise and know exactly what the heck they're doing. So I go along with a lot of the things that they say with, with some of these things that I don't know. But I do know police, fire, and levies really deserve something. Whatever small amount it is, it doesn't make any difference. But it's, it's something that shows that we're moving forward in each one of those departments also. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kristoff. Mayor Pretend Sandin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this discussion is so critical and important, and as Danny's question was about knowing, and kind of a bit more granular, granular level, this kind of preliminary expenditure plan. I think to Mr. Kristoff's point too, I think some of what he's suggesting is folded under this reducing community impacts of homelessness, including cleanup and enforcement, I think that's actually part of. And it is our, it is really important for our city to be focused on those areas where we have to keep public safety in mind. I think this is, this is how I envisioned when we had the workshop, when we were contemplating putting this forward. This is, this is how I thought of these pieces coming together. And so I, when I, when, when, you know, we're out talking to folks, these are the, these items come forward all the time. And so this provides us with a mechanism to actually fund this, that we don't have, we don't have the funds otherwise. So I think this addresses a lot of issues that are important when we hear about the homelessness and more money for road repairs and figuring out how to kind of bolster, not replace, but bolster the educational opportunities for our citizens. So I think having this discussion tonight and having more clarity about kind of, again, intended expenditures that would come from this measure is, is critical.
I, I, I really appreciate the, this is such a thoughtful... I, I, I really appreciate the, this is such a thoughtful, complete conversation about this. And I, I, one thing I mentioned, just listening to what, to everything that's been said, and, and it wasn't the main point that Mr. Kristoff, I'm sorry, that Mr. Ledesma or Mr. Johansson made, but it was a very important one, which is the, our, you know, like signature West Sacramento leverage strategy, right? That we're, we're not going to solve most, most of these issues, other than road repair, which we could probably do quite a bit with this much money. But it will also help us to qualify to match for other funds. But if we, if we take that as our, as, you know, as a principle guiding, as a guiding principle for how we're going to expend these, these funds into the future. So we're not just, we're not, we're not looking to spend, you know, $200,000, $250,000 on homelessness just because we had $250,000 for homelessness. If we don't, and we know we can't solve homelessness with $250,000. But if we can qualify for, you know, this grant here, or that grant there, in order to make that money sing and do something real, then we would do that. But what that means, and I think we, I think we did this in J and K, where we, our targets were ranged, so that, and I think the top of the, if you added up all the maxes, they added up to more than the projected revenue, because we knew that there would be, you know, we wouldn't, we wouldn't actually hit every target for precisely that reason. We, we're not going to go spend money on trails if there's not some match for trails, because we, we can, we can buy six feet of trails with this much money. So, you know, maybe one way to approach that issue and Mr. Kristoff's is to, you know, is to add another, you know, add a small category, because we didn't list it in the, it's not in the ballot argument itself, but, you know, add a, a small category for other safety that's, you know, that's a, that of this amount, that's a hundred thousand, or, or, you know, some, some amount that would allow us to be able to, if there is, as Mr. Kristoff said, if there's some opportunity to be able to leverage some resources for flood or for fire, for police, I do also agree that the police is a significant part of the reducing community impacts of homelessness, and we should, we ought to be able to get another officer out of that, out of those dollars. But maybe that's one way, so that the total goes up, that just the total goes up by three point, by $100,000 with, with, you know, with, with, while the bottom line stays at the, I mean, the bottom line stays at the actual projected revenue. So then we have to just manage, we, we still have to budget it every year, right? And you still have to expend it. We have to appropriate the funds. So it's not as though we would overspend. But in terms of what our targets are, they would allow us a little bit more flexibility in that way. So that might be a way to accomplish, to, to build off the philosophy that the two of you highlighted, in order to get to the, to the objective that, that you're raising, Mr. Kristoff, because I think there's broad agreement.
Yeah, even if it's, we'll, we'll say, even tonight, we've talked about West Capital Avenue, talked about Jefferson Boulevard, talked about traffic accidents and all those kinds of things. Maybe we could start some kind of pilot programs that brings two new motorcycle officers onboard with the West Sacramento to combat that. It'll make a dent. It differs. It, it, it protects people. So I, I, I think that, you know, there's, there's probably some opportunities, and I don't think it has to be anything of a great expenditure. But at the same time, I think that, you know, it's, it's something that can make a little bit of difference. And, and like I said earlier, I think the, the top priority of the city's place in fire, along with, of course, my love's flood protection, but, you know.
Who doesn't love flood?
Who doesn't love flood protection?
Yeah, right.
But anyway, it's, it's just those kinds of things that I was thinking about as I read through this.
Okay. Well, that's, that's some pretty universal nodding at the end. So I think it's a sufficient direction in order to return on November fifth, I mean, November second, sorry.
So you'd like to, for us to come back with a, the targets that are identified in Recommendation One and Two, and focus on that, and add a provision for public safety?
Yes.
And then allow staff to do additional detailed work on potential leveraging opportunities and bring that back up probably after the first of the year?
Yeah, as part of, as part of our regular strategic planning and budget process. And at some point, we will, I mean, this, this is the first stage of being able to adopt the, 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 the more articulated targets that will then become the basis of the Measure E report, you know, annual reports of the community. Without targets, we have nothing to report on. So this is the starting point for that. But we, but through the budget process and the strategic planning sessions, we'll be able to build out the rest of the elements.
Okay. And there were no changes on the framework for the kids' home run program?
Okay. All right.
Got it.
Great. Thank you very much. All right, that brings us then to Item Nine, which is a workshop on the West Sacramento Enhanced Infrastructure Financing District. Mr. Bloomberg and Mr. Laurel.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So this workshop is a long time coming. It's hard to believe that we're nearly five years removed from that fateful CRA versus Manas Santos decision back in 2011. But we're really only here because of the council's continued focus and tenacity on this topic. Really want to thank you for your, for your foresight on this, doing Measure G back in 2012, and advocating for the changes for the EIFD law that we have before us today. While most other cities were forced to stop what they were doing regarding redevelopment and the post-redevelopment dissolution environment, we barely had to slow down. And so what we're doing tonight is bringing forward a workshop on actually taking that next step of implementation of the Community Investment Action Plan that you adopted back in May of 2012. We wanted to, before we get too far into the formation process on the EIFD, bring forward all the policy issues that we've identified, and some really critical decisions about the geographic scope and proposed uses of the district. So those are really the purposes of the workshop tonight, but we also wanted to use it as a format to provide some additional information about the law and how it works. We, we haven't done that in a while, and I'm going to go through a lot of information. I'll try to do it quickly and have lots of time for questions. So this is a familiar picture, hopefully, as you're riverfront in downtown area. A lot of the achievements of redevelopment are easy to pick out if you know what you're looking at here. But just kind of as a reminder of where we've been since 1987, each of these pens represents an investment the Redevelopment Agency made over the course of 87 to dissolution, represents about $130 million in, in total investment. Just in that last 10 years of the agency alone, there was $60 million of infrastructure invested in, in this area. And on that point of leveraging, it was, it was leveraged on a one-to-one basis with grants. So that 60 million led to 120 million in a lot of the projects you see here. So obviously, when redevelopment was eliminated, we, we took the action to, to put together the pro-West SAC group that Chris Ledesma headed up, and the mayor commission. Out of that, we produced Community Investment Action Plan. Out of that came 20, I believe, recommendations that have all been mostly implemented at this point, Measure G being the primary, got 87% approval back in 2012. But we also pinpointed a, a need to have tax increment financing. The revenue we get from Measure G is only good as pay-as-you-go money, but it doesn't really give us the opportunity to build big projects. And we know we have some big projects that, that need to be funded down the road. And so we, we really spent most of the last three years, or after dissolution, focusing on legislative improvements. We got a couple of bills done that gives us the ability to do the EIFD. I also listed some of the other accomplishments out of the, the plan, just as reminders. AB-806 is the most recent one. It gives the city the ability to buy and sell real estate, much like the Redevelopment Agency had. So again, the same picture. This is post-Measure G. These are the, the projects that have been funded through the, the five million a year currently. Really, it's added up to about 15 million that has gone into each of these different improvements. And again, that, that leveraging component, we've actually outpaced that, that number. We're over 20 million in grants that have been leveraged with the Measure G funds that have been invested in these projects. So I, I don't think I need to explain tax increment financing concept, but that, that's it. It's, it's the growth of property tax. Over time, you're able to bond against that growth to do future improvements. So SB 628, that's the, the piece of law that enabled EIFDs, was passed in 2014. And the EIFD is really about building public infrastructure and other projects of community-wide significance. You'll see that's a theme here. But to use that money to create additional investment based on infrastructure improvements and other, other projects. So there are some prerequisites. We meet them all. But the ones that I want to highlight are, the big paradigm shift in the new law is that you can't have the school share or community college share in the tax increment. That, that's a big departure from redevelopment. And frankly, it's the reason why a lot of cities aren't, aren't looking at this very closely. But we have different circumstances that enable us to move ahead here. So the other thing to think about is we still have obligations of the agency. We, we come to the oversight board every six months or every year now, I can't remember. But somewhere you sit on that, and we, and we have the obligations that we're still paying off. That'll continue, and as those debts are paid, consider them senior to the EIFD revenue. When those go away, the EIFD has more potential funding. So just a quick comparison between EIFDs and RDAs. In your report, there's a more detailed analysis that we attached that actually compares IFD law, RDA law, and, and the other new tool, the Community Vitalization Investment Authorities, that we've looked at, but may, may have application here on a more limited basis. But EIFDs are clearly the way to go for us on the scale that we're talking about. So the main things I want to point out are the highlights here. You do need 55% of, of district property owners or voters, depending on how many residents you have, to issue bonds, but there is no vote required for formation. And that's an important point that changed in the law from the IFD to EIFD. So even with that 55% bond requirement, there are other ways of, of dealing with EIFD debt. I'm going to get into that in a little bit. The term, though, is really important, because EIFD technically doesn't have an expiration until you issue bonds. So when we thought about redevelopment, we knew that we had that date in 2037 that it was going to end, and no one was really sure it was going to happen then. But, but at least with an EIFD, you have a, a constant stream of revenue that you can continue to invest in infrastructure, and, at least for 45 years. And then, we, we talked about this before, but the housing requirements that RDAs had don't apply to EIFDs. So at least for the time being, there's no housing set aside. And there's no inclusion requirement, although you can use the money for affordable housing, and we have used Measure G money for affordable housing in the past. So that is an option. And the other big difference is there's no geographic requirement on, on spending the money only in the district. That was a, one of the limitations that redevelopment had that we're no longer confined to. So we looked at the, basically, the whole city when we were, when we were looking at forming this district. And we spent the better part of the last year, Paul was really leading the work on this, to analyze these areas. And we picked these areas based on either being in the old project area, the old redevelopment area, or being areas of significant new growth. And there's really only three of those in Southport. There was the Liberty Area, the Newport Estates area, and Southport Gateway. So we, we looked at different scenarios, and considering all the factors, what we arrived at is the basic logic is the old RDA area is currently going to Measure G. That revenue is, is easy to count for. It's, it's, it's continuing what redevelopment was doing. And so the, the recommendation that staff's carrying forward on the geographic boundary is that we essentially mimic the old redevelopment area as the district, as the EIFD. And, and again, the reason, the primary reason for that is because it makes for not only very, you know, clean accounting, but also probably more fundamentally on a, on a, on a policy level, the, the Measure G revenue was never going to the general fund. It was always in redevelopment. It's in Measure G now. It would carry forward to the, to the EIFD. You would always have the option, until we actually issued debt on, on the EIFD revenue, to divert some of that to the general fund. But just as a matter of starting out, it made sense to staff to look at the former project area and just kind of carry the redevelopment, Measure G paradigm forward. So just for comparison's sake, because it doesn't exactly match, we, we had the former redevelopment area on the left, the recommended EIFD area on the right. The main omissions from this, and it's a difference of about 1,300 acres or so, the CHP Academy isn't included in there. We figure if that ever flipped, we would, we would add it later. You can always do that, or form a new district. But for the time being, there's no, there's no tax from it. It's likely to be there a while. And then also, there's a couple other school district properties and other parts of the city. That leads me to my second recommendation, which is the CREA tool, which is, that's, that's what they're calling the acronym. But it's, it's the other tax increment tool that's, that's new to California. Really has better application in the other parts of the project area that we're in redevelopment, but we're not recommending for the EIFD. The main factor there is EIFDs don't have property assembly ability. The CREAs do, and it could be more useful in, in this particular area, just because there is a lot of different fragment in ownership is, is a big issue there. And to do any really, you know, widespread redevelopment, you're going to need a tool that looks more like redevelopment. And that's, that's what the CREA is. Now, we could shift and, and simply include the whole project area in the EIFD, but the other factor is that we also tried to, to rule out the areas that are likely, or not likely, to generate a lot of new tax increment growth, and also they, they have higher service demands. So you have to do a pretty detailed fiscal analysis when you're setting this up. And these are the parts of the project area. Again, it's, it's really the area in red that we've identified as, as the ones that you might want to keep out. Now, there is another omission that we're going to fix. We're still tweaking this map. The intersection of Sacramento Avenue and Jefferson was in the former project area. There's a couple, there's a vacant parcel there. There's also the shopping center where Arte Agus is. That was in the redevelopment area, and we're actually going to plan on putting that back in. We do think that makes sense for the, for this district.
EIFD, not, not CREA?
The EIFD, yes. And then Recommendation Three is really related to the other flexible part of the EIFD laws. You can form as many districts as you want. Now, you, you, you know, double and triple the admin and the setup and all the other factors that go into it, to doing that. But, but you, the reason you would do it is if you plan to issue bonds, you want to be able to capture the growth at the point the development happens. And so if you took all these different sub areas and made them individual districts, technically you could maximize your bonding capacity that way, most ideally. On the other hand, you don't have to issue bonds at the EIFDs. Konstantin Baronov, our, our legal counsel on, from Chronic on this, on this topic, is also looking at this. And there's kind of a statewide look at other options for issuing EIFD debt that aren't traditional bonding. And I can get into that a little bit if you have any questions. But, but based on that and all the other factors I, I outlined, we, we think it's best to do one district with these boundaries. So the uses of EIFDs, there's an attachment in your report that has a similar list to this. You, you really can use them for anything that is infrastructure of community-wide significance, that has a tangible connection to the properties in the district. Here in West Sacramento, that's a pretty exhaustive list, if you really think about it. And, and the other enhancements of the law that were done with SB 628 were to allow some of those last things listed there, starting with brownfield remediation, all the, all the way down to projects to implement a sustainable community strategy, which is anything in West Sacramento, really. So, so it's a very flexible tool in terms of how you, how you can use it, in terms of the funding. And so because of that, we are going to include in the, in the EIFD plan, sort of borrowing from the CIP, a very extensive list of projects that may be funded. Obviously, we're not going to have enough money or the need to fund each one of those, but we don't want to be limiting on how we use this, this tool. And, and we'll also include some general references to some of those last few items about having a brownfield remediation program, that kind of thing. So we have some work to do around that, but that's what the EIFD plan will, will do. So there are things that you can't use EIFD money for, and this gets to, back to Measure G. What do we do with Measure G once we establish this district? And I think this list really illustrates that these are things that we do to prepare for all the projects that we try to build infrastructure-wise and otherwise. Things like specific plans, and when we need to analyze infrastructure needs in a specific area. And then, and then some of the basic considerations, the administration of the district itself, you can't use EIFD money to fund. Also, operations and maintenance. So if you build something with the district, you can't maintain it over time. So what we're recommending there is that we keep Measure G functioning the way it's functioning, and think of it as Measure G will, will have its final year when the EIFD starts. That would be the new base year for the district. All the increment from there, or at least as much as you choose to allocate, would go to the EIFD. Measure G would continue to receive the rest, and that could be used to support all of these other items that still have funding needs, but the district won't be able to fund. And then related to that, this is something we worked really hard to get into the law. It's, it's a concept, John Robinson and I first cooked up back when we did the, the legislation, and it, it, it considers the, the revenue that comes to the district, or comes to the city from the loss of redevelopment. So starting with the, this chart, all the property tax that came to redevelopment, we get our share. We get our, our 48 to 50% share. What we did in the legislation is allowed a provision that, that the city can elect to send that money to the district if it so chooses. The reason that's important is in the first few years of these districts, you're not going to have a lot of tax increment. And if you wanted to issue debt, you're going to have a very limited borrowing capacity. So this at least gives us the option to dedicate net revenue money to the district to be able to bolster the, the bonding capacity. We're not sure if we're actually going to need to use it, but it, at least it's a tool that has a lot of relevance here, because again, Measure G is, is spinning off about five million a year at this point. So it could give us a nice boost in those early years. relevance here, because again, Measure G is spinning off about five million a year at this point, so it could give us a nice boost in those early years. So the recommendation is really just to keep that consideration open as we go ahead with the district. So EIFDs are not like redevelopment agencies where the council sat as the board. An EID has to be established through a new public finance authority, which has to be governed by a separate public finance authority board. That board has to be made up of three council members and two members of the public appointed by the council. The members of the public don't have to live in the district. It doesn't even say they have to live in the city, although I think that would be pretty obvious. But the point is, the council appoints those members. The city attorney's office has looked at this, kind of the obvious question you might ask, well, can those members be council members? And there are some concerns about simultaneous incompatible office, I believe is the term. And so for that reason, we're recommending that the council appoint two members of the public to the board. And in pretty short order, we're going to bring back the resolution of intent to form on November sixteen. And so between now and then, we'll need to have the council, if you choose to go ahead, to think about those appointments. There are some economies of scale we can apply to the meetings themselves. The Port Commission meets the first meeting of the month, the PFA board could be second Wednesday. And we also don't think it'll meet very often, so in the setup process, there's a few times it'll have to meet. But beyond that, it's really about budgets and, you know, doing plan amendments when they're needed, so it could just be a couple times a year at that point, kind of like the Oversight Board. Yes.
And the Riley Field Board and every sixteen other boards.
Right. And then the final recommendation has to do with SEQA, we do have to think about SEQA when we're setting this up. We have the fortunate timing of the general plan going forward, and the EIR plan for certification by the end of the year. So what we've done, and David Tilly referenced it earlier, is we're putting the necessary references in the general plan EIR to cover the EIFDs, since it covers the whole city and contemplates all the infrastructure projects that are going to be built, we think it provides adequate coverage for the EID plan. And then when we form the district, we'll follow that up with a notice of exemption, just like we do when we form CFDs. So just very briefly, here's the schedule, the next time this item will be back, Paul will bring the resolution of intent and ask the council to appoint the PFA. And then the PFA would have its first meeting, we're just projecting here December fourteenth. And that's really a formality to have the PFA direct the city to prepare the plan, and then the rest of the process goes forward. We think if we're able to get the plan done in the time we hope to, we could have this up and running by the second meeting in April, hopefully. And that would put us on pace to be the first EID in the state, as far as I know. So that's not the goal, but that would be an interesting fact if we're able to achieve that. So with that, that's all the questions I had, I did want to thank Paul, Konstantin, Katie Jacobson has also been a contributor to this, and everyone back to RDA dissolution, so thanks.
I'm pretty sure that is your goal, actually. All right, other questions for the co-chair of the statewide CalEd Technical Committee that developed all of this work? Mr. Johannesen?
Aaron, great presentation, thorough presentation, and bringing us up to speed on what's going on here. So, yeah, depending what the rest of the council, how they chime in, I'm supportive of the recommendations. On the CREA, I think that's a good choice, too, on West Capitol Avenue, because I think of any places that we've looked at over the years that need consolidation, the ability to consolidate land or properties, West Capitol Avenue is one of them, just because of the nature of the property ownership there. To have that extra tool, I think it's going to be huge in the future. So basically, these things are forty-five years. You know, one of the problems with redevelopment agencies, the law changed. So I don't know if you'll be able to answer this, but if there's a plan drafted, the EIFD is instituted, bonds are issued, five years later, could it be required to have affordable housing?
Yeah, if past experience is any indication, I think Jeff would agree with me, we can't rely on what we do today being grandfathered in the future. But the difference, the key difference with EIFDs versus redevelopment is we're not using, it's our money, we're using the city's money only.
It was ours before.
It was, but we also had the school share and the other stuff, so there was a state policy basis for some of the changes that they ultimately implemented. But not that that will stop that from happening, but I think the other advantage is we're fortunate to be at the forefront of this, and we have a strong voice now and are known for doing this, and I think we'll be in a good position to justify the policy reasons why. Changes in the next few years would be a bad way to go about helping cities make this work. If anything, we're looking at doing additional cleanup that would clear up some of these things, like the PFA board constituency, it'd be nice, we think, anyway, if it could act like redevelopment did, where you have the council sit as the board. But, you know, that may not be important to everyone, so.
Yeah, I imagine what would happen is you'd have rumblings of potential changes, and then I think we could respond at that time to see whether or not we're in compliance with a potential policy change. You know, for example, say affordable housing or inclusionary housing, maybe be already on that in terms of our plan on how we're doing the financing or what the projects we're doing, so we're basically, you know, kind of ahead of the curve in terms of any kind of policy change. Yep, thank you.
Mr. Ledesma?
Thank you, and thanks, Aaron, for certainly the very thorough job and recommendations, which kind of bring us up to date on where we are with the EIFD, but more importantly, kind of generally with our community investment strategy. And, but I appreciate everyone's work around this, I'm glad to see that not just that the concept of Measure G is coming to fruition, when there's a the goal line is in sight, we can get to April and have it formed. I'm not just excited about that, I'm excited about your continuing to think about other solutions and about how we're going to sustain funding for these types of economic development activities going forward. So the addition of CREA into our portfolio of tools was welcome to see, that we're, so the tool A came available, and B, we can utilize it for a very specific use. So I appreciate that you and the rest of the team are continuing to look out for those items and be able to add them into our portfolio, because that was always the idea of the community investment strategy, was where can we, what tools, what levers can we pull for what need? And I think that this, it's a really great example, couldn't be more proud of the kind of work you guys are doing here, this is this actually, you know, the way it's forming, it will help a community if we can make it happen, so, so thank you. The notion of kind of where we are on the EIFD, because when this first, we first started talking about it, we were actually looking, thinking of the districts being smaller, right, I think there was a contemplation of it being, I think we had thought about it, maybe just laying over the RDA territory, project. I think there was one time we were looking at having smaller districts. And I'm kind of just, if you could walk me through, sort of going back to, okay, now let's just go ahead and make it one large district rather than two to three or four districts that I think at one time we were contemplating.
Right, so kind of started with the Bridge District, we had an immediate need there and got the law changed to do the IFD there. We could have applied that on a broader scale, but we were trying to meet a specific commitment and funding need for that specific area. So as we got into looking at the EID, you're right, we did start with multiple options, and, you know, different parts of the riverfront, different parts of Southport. And the idea behind that was, going back to what I said about bonding, we were trying to separate areas based on their pace of development. So if we knew an area, say like Seaway, isn't likely to have any development for several years versus an area like the Bridge District where it was imminent, then if you were planning to issue bonds in the Bridge District in the next ten years, and you include those together, you're now, you know, you're now putting them together on that forty-five-year clock for bonding. So that was the consideration, we've analyzed more, we are looking more into other ways of issuing debt that are not bonds, and bonds trigger the forty-five-year clock. But the law does contemplate other forms of debt that the district can enter into that do not, or don't appear to, anyway. So an example of that might be where we have the West Sacramento Financing Authority, and the district could make an allocation under, say, a contractual obligation to the West Sacramento Financing Authority that could issue debt. Or we could go to the I-Bank with the revenue stream and issue debt, but those are not typical bonds that require voter approval. So that was sort of the prevailing factor in why we are recommending one single district at this point. That and also the administration factors, it would be a lot more work, we'd have to have three PFAs, you know, there's a lot of different things there, so.
Well, that rationale was apparent, and I would agree with it on that alone. The other financing structures you're speaking of, are those are those baked, are they there? Because I worry about, you know, are we fully investigating those areas as going to the I-Bank as an example, if we decide to do that, is it going to be feasible to to kind of go forward and use that instrument?
Honestly, the answer is not yet, but there's, you know, this is a brand-new law, and there are enough people looking at this specific issue where it gives us, you know, at least confidence going into it that, well, we could have those options. And the I-Bank is one that, yeah, that there needs some work on that. But maybe Paul can weigh in on the other, you know, using the financing authority, maybe give an example.
Yeah, well, I'd just begin by saying that I don't think much is known about tax increment financing with EIFDs, because they don't exist. You know, how would the bond market react to an EID secured bond if there's senior debt from the old redevelopment agency? I mean, there are a lot of questions out there, but one of the areas that Aaron references, we're looking at a number of different ways that the EID can budget funds towards a long-term commitment. But the definition of debt is not one that would require a fifty-five percent vote in order to allow you to, the EID, for the PFA to enter into a contract into budget funds on a long-term basis towards something that's like debt. And I think the Infrastructure Bank Loan Program is one we looked at where, you know, you could likely do something like that without actually, you know, getting bonding authority, because it wouldn't be a bond.
Yeah, and really, the issue of the vote is less of a deterrent than the forty-five-year clock. You know, in this city, you know, with the history of the electorate here, the fifty-five percent was actually a welcome, it got lowered from two-thirds of fifty-five. So I wouldn't rule that out as a, you know, future possibility here. But the forty-five years is really the, in terms of the strategy going forward, do we want to put together those areas that are going to have development much later on and start their clock at that point? But I think to Paul's point, the law is very specific about if you're issuing bonds, then it starts the clock. But it doesn't say the same thing about debt, and that's kind of what we're hanging our hat on, is that it's very explicit in there. And we do have potential models that could work to allow us to do on a smaller scale debt obligations that don't trigger the forty-five-year clock.
Yeah, and I guess my point is that as we're as we go into the strategy of one district, is it not to go into it eyes wide open about the limitations or what are the offsets of those other instruments? I don't know those programs at all, and so let's make sure we do our due diligence on those so that it doesn't encumber us for something else we want to do after. We, you know, we get, so we're going to depend on these for financing specific projects within the district. I just want to make sure we're not hamstrung by it, not because we didn't do our due diligence on them going into it, so.
Right, and the only other thing I'd point out there, it wasn't in the report and in sort of a nuance, is that we are only, we're forming a single entity district. So it's an unanswered question in law, if forty-five years goes, can you follow that up with another EID? That, it's not explicit in the law, I think what they had in mind there is the forty-five-year term is based on when you're co-mingling, you know, county money with city money, then you need to have a horizon, but it's something that's silent in the law, and that's something else we would look at.
I appreciate the report, thank you, Aaron, good work.
Mayor Protim Sandin?
Thank you. We're just so fortunate that we have such an expert and the whole team here to work on this, and I think we do, I think you're right, I think we do enjoy being pioneers, so I think it will be great that we're moving forward. I appreciated the way in which you moved forward with the recommendations, spelling them out, in case we did want to, as you know, Mr. Ledesma said, we wanted to think about something differently, we didn't just take it all off off track, we could actually just kind of dig in there, so I really appreciated the kind of thoughtful, thoughtfully going through recommendations in case we had points of departure, I don't think we do, but in case we did, I'll be really interested to know, I know it says you're going to the Economic Development and Housing Commission on November ninth, so I think you'll be giving them the similar kind of presentation, taking in any of our feedback, and I know that that they may come back also and give us, or give staff different direction, give you different direction that you will tell us about when you come back to us in mid-November. So I'll be really interested to hear if there's kind of other thoughts about this, but I think this is, this will benefit us greatly to move forward, and I'm just so thrilled that we have expertise at your level, and again, the team's level here on our city staff.
I concur with everything except what she just said. It's nice that you're here, but, no, it's absolutely true, and the presentation was really excellent in that way, and it is very modular in terms of our ability to do policy work. The, so the CREA choice, I wanted to dive a little bit deeper with you on. So we'd be, I mean, to some extent, this, one of the rationales for not doing multiple EIFDs is the administrative costs and all these different things. We'd be setting up a CREA for a pretty small area and have to do a separate annual report with a separate audit, and it seems like there's some of that involved as well, with maybe not that much activity happening. So I'm curious if you're thinking about that, and then in a corollary to that, the west end of West Capitol Avenue, what you're thinking is in terms of the distinction between that and the CREA area, and particularly in the context of the timing question that Mr. Ledesma just raised. I know the city manager would like to develop, redevelop the west end of West Capitol Avenue like next week. For me, it's not in the, it's not in our, it's not in our near-term set of opportunity set, which would which might suggest that that's an area that, if we could add it later to the EID, or if it's adjacent to a CREA district, what was your thinking about the rationale about why that, why the west end in particular, one B on the, or one D, sorry, on the map would go into the EID and now?
Yeah, I went back and forth on the west end for that exact reason. Both the benefits of a CREA in terms of property assembly, but also the pace of development issue to a lesser extent. I think the difference between the west end and the area sort of around Harbor, West Capitol, the industrial area right there, is you have much larger parcels, and so the potential for acquisition and reassessments and development occurring on those properties is much higher than, say, the area to the east. For example, I think there are still lots, and I could be, Charlene, correct me, but that are highway commercial, and we've actually had hotel proposals on a couple of those before. Those would be great to capture in the district if they occur. And the mere possibility of them occurring because of them being larger parcels is kind of the factor that outweighs not including them in the district. Although I do think if we were to choose to go with omitting them, and, you know, the possibility of bringing them back in later, should we not do a CREA, as far as I know, we'd have that option, and I'm looking at Paul here, to annex additional area into the EID. So that's something we could look at.
Think about it, and maybe this is a topic to raise, to discuss with the commission, but I don't have a firm opinion on it, it's just that it struck me that that, that given the reasoning that you've described, that that area could either go into CREA or be delayed.
Yeah, it was mainly larger parcels and actual ability to redevelop in the near term.
And are you thinking CREA for that section of West Capitol Avenue immediately, or? Because the clock will start ticking upon formation, that one's not bond-dependent, so.
No, it wouldn't be immediate at all, it would take future analysis, and again, we'd have the option to put it into the EID if we decided that made more sense.
Because someone else is already forming the first CREA in California?
No, it'll be interesting on that one. No, I, I, it'll be interesting on that one. But, uh, but I think, um, we would look at it as we develop this district and, and going forward, um, taking a very close look at the land use plans there, too. Uh, one of the other factors is I don't think there's much land zone for housing in those areas. Uh, so would the strategy be more around land assembly and basic infrastructure? Um, and the CREA has certain qualification criteria, which definitely that area would meet.
Yeah.
Uh, but I, I don't, I don't see us moving ahead in May with a, with a CREA. It would be a while.
Because, because the other thing, you didn't highlight the affordable housing differences between CREA and E I F Ds. But it's in, it's in the excellent report of the committee. Because of that, so, so the, so CREA would require the, essentially of our tax increment, if we use the CREA mechanism, we'd have to spend twenty-five percent of money on affordable housing.
That's correct, but, uh, I think the strategy around that would be, you, just like redevelopment, you could spend the money outside of the district. And because you wouldn't have housing being built that would trigger that twenty percent inclusion requirement, which is equally daunting, um, you could spend the twenty-five percent housing set aside on projects outside of the CREA.
Okay.
So that would be the approach we'd recommend if we did that.
All right. Maybe on a trade basis or something? Because I mean, the, the, we have infrastructure needs in that area.
Right, right.
Some of which we've already talked about tonight.
You could do something like that, as long as it meets the community significance.
Right, because I mean, I would, I, I, because I would, for me at least, I wouldn't want to, I wouldn't necessarily want to, like, lead with an affordable housing project there in, in, in advance of the necessary transportation, infrastructure improvements, or at least not married with it. Um, so it, so it's, the, the, the CREA mechanism seems slightly more restrictive in that.
Right.
In that domain, so we ought to, we ought to, uh, think about that as we go forward as well. Uh, the, I, I share Mr. Johansson's concerns about the legislature, I think we all do. And, uh, it may be that, you know, it, I, I mean, you would have a better perch on this, uh, Cal Ed than I, than, than we do. But, um, if more place, if CREA is a, if, if CREA were to become the, the more used option, and I don't know if that's likely or not, um, it would divert attention away from, if there are only a handful of us for whom E I F Ds actually make, uh, financial sense. Um, there, it may, it may give us a little bit of safe harbor if all the action is over in some other, some other program like CREA, so.
Yeah, CREA did get more attention for whatever reason. I get, maybe the, the league was really driving it. Um, the E I F D did have some attention from the housing advocates, uh, just, just to, uh, highlight that, and that's where the replacement housing obligations came in. Um, so there are, there are some provisions that were amended. Um, but again, I think, you know, because the vote requirement for bonds is, is going to be an obstacle for people, uh, it'll, it'll be interesting to see which ones, uh, which cities choose one or the other, or if they do both is another option like us, so.
Mr. Johansson?
Thank you, Mr. Aaron. Yeah, just, uh, maybe to, um, kind of just get back into that, the west end, uh, property again. So, um, we really don't know what's going to happen out there. You know, it could be, it could be a place for, like, the, the expansion of, uh, the big box area, which would require larger parcels. It could be an area that maybe doesn't need that type of assemblage. So, uh, I wasn't really clear that if, would a strategy be to just not have it in either an E I F D or a CREDA or CREA, and then look at annexation? How, uh, you know, depending on what the use would be?
I, I think what we would do is we would, we would leave it out of the E I F D for now if, if we, you know, ultimately look at it closely and decide that that's a better option. And then we would put it back into either the E I F D or a CREA. It would be one or the other.
Right, so if you do a CREA, for example, on West Capitol Avenue, does that have to be contiguous? If you annex?
I believe it does.
Okay, so you'd have to have some way to get up there and...
Yeah, but, but just like redevelopment, you can cross a freeway, and it's considered contiguous. So that wouldn't be an option for the geography we're talking about.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just looking at ways to keep it maximum flexibility, depending on how it shakes out on the west end.
All right, is there any further comments or direction? We did have one request to speak by Marie Garahova, but I don't see her present. Okay, so then we'll, uh, this was a workshop only, and we'll be back for further consideration at a future meeting. Brings us to council calendar, Ms. Burnland.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. Um, I have a couple of dates that might be of interest to you. Um, October twenty-sixth, that's a Wednesday, there's a Flood Preparedness Week event at Riverbank Elementary. That's from ten AM to eleven-thirty AM. And then Friday, October twenty-eighth, is the final off-the-grid at the barn. That's all it has.
For this year.
For this year, yes.
All right, any questions on the calendar? See manager reports?
Well, Mayor and council, I was hoping to announce the Costco at the west end of West Capitol tonight. But that is not going to occur. I did want to say that, uh, great staff presentations, and you did a great job acknowledging all the presenters. I did want to say that Chief McDonald is out of the state on family business, but he did an excellent job in terms of getting the best practices lined up for the presentation he saw. Also wanted to, uh, say that our, uh, officers are also a big part of that. And Sergeant Kenny's here, and he kind of embodies that, uh, that spirit that you see among our officers. They've embraced the homeless coordinator and the mental health assessment workers there. And, uh, Sergeant Kenny is, does a great job of representing the department in front of the media, but it, it has definitely trickled down through all the troops, so really appreciate that. Uh, also, uh, we didn't have a, a port regular meeting today, but we have been contacted, contacted by the Kings and Sacramento Viziers Bureau about, um, making the port available for a cruise ship that could serve a future All-Star game. So, uh, that appears to be feasible, so we are working with them and, uh, I'll let them to know that occurs in 2020, we'd have the green light to run a cruise ship up here, and that could be a hotel-related, uh, venue for an All-Star game.
And we, when, uh, you know, we've been asked to, I've, I've been asked to send a letter to the All-Star Committee on behalf of the Sacramento bid. Not with a, not the whole lot of detail on that issue, but, but raising that possibility, so.
Very good.
All right, any questions, city manager reports? City attorney reports? Any staff direction for members of the council? We have no future agenda requests. Is there a motion to adjourn? Mr. Johansson moves, and Mayor Protem, seventeen seconds, does the meeting be adjourned? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed during the motion carries, meeting is adjourned.